Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting of August 31st, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Agenda number one, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the August 31st, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, for view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakcam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be reviewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv. Okay. The first thing, the second thing on the agenda is the announcements. The state primary election will be held tomorrow, September 1st, at Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp, located at 28 Precinct Street. Hours of voting are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Lakerville Public Library is happy to announce that it has reopened to the public with limited hours in service, whereas the Governor's Executive Order, face coverings will be required to enter. Curbside pickup still available by appointment for those unable to wear a mask. Please visit the library's website at www.lakvillelibrary.org for additional information regarding library services and hours. Selectmen would like to thank Muckey's Liquors for their efforts in collecting can and bottle donations, with money collected going to the Lakeville Park Commission, St. Vincent de Paul Sacred Heart Food Pantry, and the Middleborough All Spoons of Sports Booster Association. Also, we'd like to thank everybody that donated cans to this effort during the months of July and August. $203 was collected and donated to the Lakeville Park Commission. Does anybody else have any other announcements that they want to bring up? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
I think the script part.
Well, how come we're the only ones doing it?
I don't know.
Nobody else, none of the other boards and committees are doing it.
They're not.
They're not. They're not doing it, so.
Maybe just take a roll call attendance then, perhaps?
Sure. As a matter of fact, I am the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Rich LaCamara, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and please permit me to confirm all members' staff and anticipated on the agenda, and President Ken Hammy. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Lilia Fabian.
Present.
Brian Day.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Maureen Cadito, Town Administrator. And Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant.
Here.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's report.
It's a short one this week, because a lot of the issues that I was bringing up will be addressed later in our meeting. Just wanted to let everyone know, all the boards and committees, to be looking out for communications from Tracy coming out about 43D and getting the 43D Committee together to start sharing the book on 43D and begin to have our meetings together. Town Hall offices are still by appointment only. All phone numbers are online and on the website. I know a lot of people have come by and wanted to stop by and just talk to someone or drop something off. Please call. Most of our services, we can take care of over the phone or online, and if not, we can accommodate with lots of appointments throughout the day. We're trying to maintain social spacing and keeping everyone as safe as possible. Anyone entering Town Hall as a visitor should make sure that they have a mask on, especially in the common areas, and we're maintaining extreme sanitation measures, making sure we're sanitizing all throughout the day. As Rich had said, as Selectmen LaCamara had said, the library is open. It's a max of 35 people inside the library at any time. It's a much pared-down service, and people are coming in, getting what they need, and then going, and people are very happy about that. COA is still performing most of its service to the elderly population by phone call, but we are transitioning into some little outside events or drive-by events to make sure that we're connecting with the seniors. We are still in need of Meals on Wheels drivers for the senior center, and I think we say it all the time, you may be the only person that seniors sees all day. It's a worthwhile endeavor, and people get lots of enjoyment out of it on both sides of the steering wheel. And just for our boards and committees also, we're going to start looking at our yearly KP Law trainings. We'll be doing them by Zoom this year. Every year, we get trainings for our boards and committees to make sure they're updated on the latest laws, rules, and regulations that are applicable to them. 2019, in the fall, was the last time we had it, and we had procurement. We missed our spring allotment due to COVID-19, but we'd like to get that started up really quick and get on the training bandwagon again. That's it for me. Short and sweet this week.
I have a question about the training. I would like to know what Coleman Page has done as far as training is concerned for the last five years, what they've provided for the town, number one. Number two, do they have videos of the
Yes.
...of the previous training, of all the previous trainings that we've done?
Okay.
And the third thing is that, do they have a catalog of training programs that they have available to the town?
I'll get you that information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go, we got a couple more minutes before our public hearing, so we're gonna go to item number six, and that's discuss the scheduling of wage and personnel meeting. We don't have anything in our packet about why we have to have this.
Tracy?
The Selectmen had previously received the letter, and when I was talking to our HR Director, she felt that this would most likely be an executive session meeting, so she and I discussed whether or not to include the letter in the agenda packet, and since the Selectmen already received it, she thought we should leave it out. And I agreed.
Did all members of the board receive that letter?
I think I got it.
I believe I did, unless there's been an updated version.
Okay. Okay, then we'll schedule the Wage and Personnel Board meeting, if this is okay with you, Brian. I know your job's scheduled before the next Selectmen's meeting at 6 o'clock.
Is that the 14th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we would do it right before and then have the regular meeting at 6:30, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be fine. I can do that.
Okay, what do we got here? We got a few more minutes? Okay. All right, at the last meeting, we talked about, we discussed the process for the Town Administrator's review, and at that meeting, we did not get the evaluations that were going to be used, the form and the template that was going to be used, you know, for those, that review. So I hope the board has had a chance to review these evaluation documents. The first document is for the Selectmen to do the evaluation of the Town Administrator. Does anybody have any questions on that document?
No, but have you reviewed them all, Mr. Chair? Have you gone over them?
I have.
Okay, Brian, you gave them to us, so you're familiar, right?
Yep, but like when reviewing anybody's own personal work, if I miss anything, let me know. When you look at a document long enough, you miss your own mistakes.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to make a motion that we use the Selectmen's review form and the self-evaluation, so for the Town Administrator's review.
Okay, do you want to second that, Brian?
I'm curious why we're not including the department heads.
Can we second her motion first for discussion?
Sure, so I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Just, I just think that right now, we should just do the Selectmen, it's, we typically don't even have, you know, whatever, so I just don't want to include the department heads. I just want to get this done, and I speak to department heads frequently enough. I probably know how most of them feel, but, and I'm also going to have to compile all the information, so I'm trying to do myself a solid here.
I agree with Leah. I don't think at this time, we should have the department heads do an evaluation of the Town Administrator, so I would like to see us just do the evaluation of the Town Administrator from the Board of Selectmen, and then the self-evaluation of the Town Administrator.
Okay, well, I created that thinking that that would give us a full circle review, so that not only would the Town Administrator have an opportunity to see what we feel is doing well or needs improvement, so that also the department heads have similar opportunity, so that you know what they like about your style, what they might like for improvement, to give that capability. I've only been here two and a half months, so I might not have been able to have all the same discussions with department heads the two of you have with your longer tenure, so I thought it would also be advantageous for me to get that feedback from those that have not yet had a chance to speak with, but that's my opinion.
I just think, I just think it puts the department heads in a bad position to have to and I don't think that's right.
I've had one department head say that he or she heard about the conversation and has been told that, you know, that person is a direct report to the Town Administrator, so they wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. And then I thought to myself, okay, maybe we can make it optional, but then I don't, you know, I think it's a little too controversial with that one, so anyways.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Fabian and I.
Right, okay, LaCamara, I.
I mean, I'm not sure how to vote. I would want all three. I want the two we have.
If you, if you don't want to vote for the motion, as Leah phrased it, then you would just vote against it.
Okay, it's not personal. I would vote against it, only because I would want all three.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the process is, is that as the members of the board are going to fill out their evaluations, okay, and give them to Leah, to Leah directly, okay, and then the Town Administrator will fill out her evaluation, self-evaluation, and give it to Leah as well. And then Leah is going to take those evaluations from the Board of Selectmen and consolidate them and do the interview, do the review, you know, with the Town Administrator. Then, once that's completed, it's a requirement by law that we provide a summary of that review, and it becomes a public record to be in the Town Clerk's office. And after that is done, if the Town Administrator wants the individual evaluations from each member of the board, then Leah will provide that information to her. Okay?
Do we have a date?
Yeah, let's set some dates. I mean, I'd like to wrap this up sooner the better if we can. I mean, next few days, the end of the week. Leah, how long do you think you'd like to compile?
Um.
I don't think you can do it in a couple of days.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No, no, I meant for us to give her our
If you guys could give it to me by, I know it's Labor Day weekend, but maybe the end of the weekend, and then I can get together with Maureen to do, you know, our part. So if you guys can just provide it within a week, let's say, or even next Tuesday after the holiday.
Okay, that's doable.
Okay.
Okay, and then the Town Administrator will give her self-review to Leah by next Tuesday as well.
Yep, and then Maureen and I can just work on the date.
Okay.
All right.
All righty, okay, moving along. All right, okay, we have a hearing. It's a little after 7:40, 6:45. We have a hearing on an application of Mahant. All right, Ns, help me out there, Matt. Where are you, Matt? Are you there?
I'm coming off mute. Mahant Nissan Corporation.
Corporation for Change of Offices/Directors/LLC Managers and Issuance/Transfer Stock/New Stockholder for the Retail Package Store Goods License to Sell All Alcohol Beverages for 330 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. Okay. All right, so now, okay, we gotta read the legal notice. Okay. Okay, and pursuant, this has been advertised in the, so into Chapter 138 of the General Law, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the Licensing Board, conduct the public hearing at 6:45 PM on Monday, August 31st, the application, Mahant Nissan Corporation for Change of Offices Director/LLC Managers and Issuance Transfer of Stock, New Stockholder for the Retail Package Store License to Sell All Alcoholic Beverages for the property located at 330 Bedford Street. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
All right, I was on mute. So moved.
Second a motion?
Okay. All right, so is there anybody that's going to be testifying? They need to be sworn in?
I'm not sure whether, I can't tell whether my client is on here or not. Bumik Patel?
Yeah. I'm here.
Is there any reason for him to testify, or?
I don't believe so. I can give my introduction if the board has any questions of him, certainly. I suppose we could swear him in at that point.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Did the board vote on the motion to open the hearing?
Yes, it did. I'm sorry. All those in favor, excuse me, Tracy, you're right. All those in favor.
Fabian and I.
Day, I.
LaCamara, I. Thank you. Okay, so I guess you're up, Matt. Sure, you can talk about the application, please.
Yeah, thank you, Board. My name is Matt Porter. I'm the attorney for Mahant Nissan Corp. Before the board tonight, this is a transfer of stock within the Corporation of Mahant Nissan Corporation, which does business as Lakeville Liquors at 330 Bedford Street. So fairly straightforward, the minority shareholder of the corporation, which was Jignesh Pachani, was the 40% shareholder, he's selling his shares to another shareholder, Shivam Patel, who will be coming in as a 40% minority shareholder, as well as a director of the corporation. Bumik Patel, who's with us today, remains the President and Treasurer, Secretary, Director. He's still the license manager as well. So it's really just a transfer, an internal transfer of stock within the minority shareholder of the corporation. The new buyer, Shivam Patel, is a very experienced license operator as well. He owns three other liquor store locations, so he certainly comes with his own set of expertise, but no changes here to the day-to-day operation of the business, no change to the license manager. So just an internal transfer of stock.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Just minor. I think the answer is yes, but Tracy, we got the updated documentation this morning for those couple of minor things.
It's all set.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm all set, Rich.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I think she, I think all those in favor.
Sorry, Fabian and I.
Day, I.
LaCamara, I. Okay, so I need a motion to approve this transfer?
I'll make the motion that we do the transfer as presented with, I believe it was the clerical, the updated clerical document with the errors that were in there with the updated document.
Second a motion?
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could Selectmen Fabian just amend her motion, and it would be to approve the Change of Offices Directors LLC Managers and Issuance Transfer of Stock, New Stockholder for Retail Package Goods Store to Sell All Alcohol Beverages for 330 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass, Mahant Nissan Corp.
I amend my motion to that.
Thank you.
Good job, Leah.
Second a motion with the amendments?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian and I.
Day, I.
LaCamara, I. Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we, next on the agenda is to meet with the town moderator, to appoint it to Capital Expenditure Committee to fill the vacancy. We can go ahead and do that, Maureen. I mean, Katie, if you want to, or do you want to wait till 7:00?
I could do it right now.
Okay.
Don't want to hang out?
I love hanging out, but I'll do it on Facebook.
All right. You're up, Katie.
Okay, thank you, Rich. So I would, I submitted a letter that you should have recommending that Kevin Kelleher be reappointed to the Capital Expenditures Committee. As you may recall, Kevin did not serve a full year on the committee, because we had convened it mid-year, and so he indicated that he would like to have a shot, one more, one more year on the committee. At the time that I had done the original appointment for Darlene, I had not received confirmation from Kevin, and I did receive a few other letters of interest for this position, and it really came down to the fact that Kevin wanted to serve longer, because he was not able to serve the full year. So I felt that I should honor that, and I just put it to the board that they take a look at those other two letters of interest to see if there might be something else that these individuals might be interested in. We have a number of gaps, openings, I believe, still, and both these individuals really had a lot to recommend them. So Kevin this year, but I do encourage the board to take a look at the other two.
I agree, Katie. I was happy to see the three people did apply. That's good. And I know one of the, one of the, one of the people that applied had served on it before, a few years back, I guess.
Yes.
So, yes, we'll, we'll keep them in mind for other positions. Don't worry about that. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Kevin Kelleher to fill the vacancy for a term to expire on July 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just equally happy to see a couple more good candidates. So, yeah, we got positions to go around, so let's keep them in mind.
Okay, all those in favor?
Tracy, did you want?
I just wanted to say that I will reach out to the other candidates and let them know of some of the vacancies we have to encourage them to apply. We'll post that again on the website and on Facebook, again, again, and again.
Okay, where were we? All those in favor?
Fabian and I.
Day, I.
LaCamara, I. Katie?
I.
All right, thanks, Katie. We appreciate your help.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You.
Good night. Okay, next on the agenda is, number eight is update on COVID-19 reimbursements.
Mr. Chair, we are putting together another bundle of COVID-19 reimbursements, and we should have that by Friday together with the accountant's office. They have, they have enough to make one of the, the bundles. The problem is, they didn't want us doing small reimbursements. They wanted to get big ones, so it's just been a bit of a challenge getting that together without having the school be able to give us the Chromebook ones. I reached out on Friday to Ashley, and I haven't heard back on what the status is on the reimbursements for any of the items that she was proposing, and I have not got anything official from Old Colony yet as for what they're looking for. So we're still waiting on them, but we'll be able to do one just based on our own payroll numbers and reimbursements coming up probably this week.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. The, the, I believe it's Famer, when we submitted to the federal government for 75% of the temporary firefighters, we only get 75%, and have we, are we going to, have submitted the additional 25% to Plymouth County?
The 25%, I can double-check on this, but the 25% should be part of our next reimbursement that we do to Plymouth County. I'll check and make sure on that.
Because it has been approved?
Yes, 25% has been approved by Secretary Heffernan, also for the state.
Okay, the next question is that we had discussion about the proposal from the fire chief having to do with replacing the fire radios. Did, we put a formal request in writing to Plymouth County Commissioners?
So I did speak with Treasurer Tom O'Brien on last, last week, one of the days last week, and he expressed maybe mixed feelings on being able to get that done, and he was going to consult with his counsel on it and get back to us this week.
Okay, we had, we had talked about, I think it was either the last meeting or the meeting before, that going forward, we wanted to have everything put in writing to them instead of having a telephone conversation, because right now, I mean, some of these decisions are political, you know, over there, and I think it's important to have it documented. So that's what we agreed to do. So had, did you, have you forwarded the letter that the chief put together about the requirements for the radios?
The chief had sent it on his own prior to me talking to Treasurer O'Brien.
But we had the letter at our last meeting, you know, as well, so you didn't give that to Tom O'Brien?
No, I did not.
Okay, so can we please go forward now and make sure that everything is documented in writing? An email would be fine, because these things fall through the cracks, and there's so many communities submitting reimbursements, you know, I'd like them to put in writing either yes or no. Okay?
If I may, Mr. Chair, as part of that request, could we also make sure, I forget the chief's exact wording, so he may have already had it in his letter, but at least outline to kind of remind them that we did hire two additional firefighters during this, so if anything, we've got new people that would need equipment that we didn't have before.
Correct.
That's my only request at the time. Thank you.
Okay, the other thing that we're going to talk about a little bit further down the agenda here. here is the telephone system. Did we put a formal request in, in writing that we were going to get reimbursed for the new telephone system?
We did not put it in writing. I do have it verbally and it is affirmed verbally. I can get it in writing.
Please put it in writing and get them to say that they're going to approve it before we do anything, so we know. Anybody else got anything on COVID-19 reimbursements?
No, I'm good.
Did we get an update from the chief on the, the grant over the weekend? It is kind of a parallel topic. Or is that still to be delivered? Who's all the PPE equipment from Bristol County?
Oh, the, the part of the group PPE.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. I don't have that in front of me right now, but.
It's okay. I know you said we might have details earlier this week. I didn't know if we got.
I didn't get anything, I didn't get anything thus far today.
Okay.
It was $14,000, Brian, so you know, it was our share of the total of 183,000. And it was a list of stuff. Pretty sure we're all copied on that.
Yeah, I saw the, I saw the big list of stuff. I was just kind of curious how they're going to break that down, town by town.
Okay. All right. Over the last couple of meetings, you know, we're going to continue our discussing, discussion of staffing and job responsibilities with the Board of Selectmen's Office. At the last meeting, because we kind of ran out of time, we really didn't have time, you know, to discuss some of the things to, that need to be addressed, you know, as far as who's to do what and what the staffing requirements are, you know, in our office. So I guess I'd like to discuss some of those things of a concern to me. And the board certainly can chime in on each one of these items that I'm going to bring up. The first thing is, at the last meeting, the town administrator proposed one position for town planner, grant writer, and other special project. The, the board, you know, rejected that proposal. And I think it was rejected for a couple of reasons. First of all, in discussion with the planning board back in February, we decided that we were going to hire a part-time planner and it was going to be either using it through Serp Ed or using it through a consultant. And unfortunately, Serp Ed has let us down. Because, and fairness to them, because of resources and their concern about their budget as everybody else is concerned about their budget. So I know that the, the planning board at their meeting, actually, I think we were on that meeting, that they're going to put together some requirements and, and look at some firms to provide some of those services. And the board should be aware that all we have to do is identify those services and interview those firms and then decide which firm, you know, we're going to, we're going to use, so it doesn't have to go up too bit. So it's an engineering firm that's going to be specifically used primarily for the Lakeville Hospital project. So continuing on, you know, the discussion was that, you know, one of the things that I think that the board needs to, I know is aware of now, is that, you know, two years ago, the, the town made a huge commitment to an HR director. And a full-time HR director with, human resources director, which we didn't have, and a full-time HR assistant. We only used to have a part-time, you know, payroll clerk. So all the responsibilities that were previously under the town administrator, having to do with personnel issues and job descriptions and processing of all kinds of stuff, having to do with employees, whether it's health insurance or whatever, now comes under this department. So we have a full-time department dedicated to doing this, which would free up hours, you know, for the, for the town administrator. The other thing, so we know the, the people that we have in our office, our executive assistant, which is Tracy, only works 32 hours a week. In most of the other offices, their, their administrative assistants are working 40 hours a week. I assumed that we had a part-time person that was going, working 18 to 19 hours a week and come to find out this past week that she's only working 12 hours a week. So, yeah, that's a concern, you know, about providing staff, staffing and resources, you know, for our department. So I think we have to talk about a couple of options here because the, the part-time person is not doing a lot of work, you know, for our office. She's doing work in other offices. So we have to talk about, you know, that staffing level. So.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt just briefly on, on the HR portion. Before, there was an HR director, there was an HR coordinator, full-time. Tracy, how many years?
Well, actually, we had something called a payroll processor. He processed all the payroll and I did all the workers comp. We did all the job descriptions, we did all the applications, all that stuff.
Harinda started, and she was a coordinator for a year prior to being.
Yeah, after the payroll processor left, then we, we went to an HR position. So she's, she, she was only here, like, I don't know, a couple of years before we went to the full-time.
I just, just wanted to clarify that that wasn't like a brand-new position, it was a position that changed from another position.
Well, it is a brand-new position because the person was not a director. You know, this is a department that was set up. Now, all those job responsibilities that was previously done by the town administrator is now done by the HR director, right?
Along with the police and the fire.
Pardon me?
Along with all the HR for the police and the fire and job descriptions for police and fire also.
But they all, but, but this department also handles anything to do for police and fire, always has, for, for health insurance, for any other issues, you know, having to do with HR, right? Which came under the, which came under the town administrator previously.
No, there was, there was a separation on some of the scales, but absolutely for the health and insurance completely.
Okay. So there's definitely been a change in responsibility as far as the town administrator's position was concerned. Before you came.
Sure.
Okay. Just so we get that clear. So, you know, there's a few things that, you know, I, I continued to review, you know, the job responsibilities of, you know, the executive assistant and the town coordinator and the town administrator's, you know, job responsibilities. And there's a few things that, and I know this isn't the first time that they've been discussed. And, you know, a few weeks back, you know, out of our office, for some reason, there was a letter, an email, excuse me, that was sent to everybody, all committees and boards, having to do with the open meeting law. And the open meeting law is the requirements of the town clerk, not the selectman's office. We don't have any responsibility having to do with the, the open meeting law. And any questions that have to do with the open meeting law are to be directed to the town clerk. And this last Friday, I saw an email that basically said somebody questioned, you know, a question about somebody maybe violated the open meeting law. Not our job. That goes directly to the town clerk. So we can clear that up going forward, that anything to do with the open meeting law or anything to do with violations of ethics, anything to do with requests for public documents starts with the town clerk's office.
Mr. Chair, if I may, after that whole thing happened and we're kind of curious, you know, what was going on, I sat down with the clerk and asked specifically how she felt roles and responsibilities in that area fall between different areas. And I don't want to put words in her mouth and it's worth maybe reaching out again, but her feeling was that any coordination between boards and committees, you know, if we want to call it our office or the town administrator's office, was within their right to send that information, but you would be 1,000% correct that if there were violations, questions on the law, the wording, that without a doubt, she is the person to go to in our authority.
Okay. Well, let's, let's talk about it then, okay? And you just got elected and I just got re-elected. And you got this gigantic packet, not from the selectman's office, but from the town clerk's office, that outlines all the responsibilities for the open meeting law, okay? It's not our responsibility to enforce it. It's not our responsibility to distribute the information. So every single board and committee that gets appointed gets one of these documents. Now, I've gotten this document not only as a member of the Board of Selectmen for the last two terms, but as a library trustee, you know, as well. So it's very clear who the responsibilities are. I don't think that, we got enough things to do, that if there's questions about the open meeting law, that's not our job.
I look at it no different as us setting up the KP law training. If, if we have concerns over that, we can bring it to the clerk and, and define those barriers or boundaries. I mean, yes, they give those packets, mine's sitting right here next to me. It's a matter of convenience to get them when you're being sworn in. I think that's great that they do that for us. But I don't see any problem with us providing information to the boards and the committees. If there's, if there is a question on breaking a law, right to the clerks they go. They're the authority of that, that's who I would go to for information.
I disagree. I think that if, if anybody's concerned about anything to do with the open meeting law, because this document, this information was sent out from our office because a few people had questions about the open meeting law, goes to the town clerk's office, doesn't come to the selectman's office.
I would suggest a working session with the town clerk.
Pardon me?
I would suggest we hold a working session with the town clerk and just define those boundaries because in my conversation with the clerk, they felt it was perfectly fine for us to send that information along.
Well, I don't think it's perfectly fine for us to be doing it because we got enough things to do.
Agreed. Talk to the clerk.
May I have a turn?
Absolutely. Sorry, I couldn't, I can't see you. I didn't know you were trying to get it.
That's okay. So I, you know, would be, I, I, I would be okay with communication between the office and the town clerk that said, okay, which one of us is going to send, you know, this out? And I think, I think the clerk would usually defer to herself, but I understand Rich's point. I think he's using this as just one example of some of the work that's being done in the selectman's office that could be done somewhere else, so that when we're talking about our own staffing needs, we're falling, you know, short with having, you know, I, I feel like Tracy's doing, you know, everything. I look at the packet and I'm like, that's so much work just to put together the whole packet for the meeting. So I, if we're talking about staffing for the selectman's office, I really feel like we need another clerical person to assist, you know, Tracy and Maureen. I mean, Tracy's, Tracy's job description was changed in April or May, I think, of 2019. Tracy was the executive assistant to the selectman. And the selectman, myself included, changed that job description to include executive assistant to the selectman and town administrator. And might I add, she didn't get a pay increase for that either. So I know Tracy's position has been changed a couple of times and she's always just sort of rolled with it, but I think right now it's at the point where the town is bigger, the needs are bigger. We have this whole 43D that we need to be prepared for. I, I, we can get some, if we can get some clerical help in the office, I think that's a direction, you know, and do better at not taking time to do the things that we're technically not responsible for.
And I'm all on board with that, totally on board with that. My only point is that if we feel our office shouldn't be doing certain things, let's make sure that we're in agreement with the office that we think should be doing it, just so that we don't think that each other are doing it.
Right.
So if we can just sit down with the office that we think is in charge, great, let's, let's just do it, formalize it, move on, free up some time. I mean, Tracy is the, the keeper of the ultimate spreadsheet for boards and committees. I don't know how she keeps it all straight. So it may have just been something easier to do when we're working with all of them, to have them send it out. So quick discussion with the clerk, I think we can get past that and figure out what to do with free cycles.
Right. And I mean, I also would like to add that, you know, we did have a person in the office who had the role of coordinator. And I, you know, I don't really think that position was, you know, fully developed. I mean, there, there's plenty of reasons why or why not, but I do think having that extra person in the office did give, you know, some assistance. And that person, you know, could do the coordination of trainings, let's say, the coordination of, you know, so that's why the job was called coordinator, to do these sort of things. But as far as complaints are concerned, Rich, going to your exact example, you know, I, I, if something's a complaint, it'd be nice, other than, we've received a couple of complaints. I, I'd like to know who all these people are that are complaining because my phone rings all day long and I can tell everybody exactly who it is that I talked to and what their complaint is. But if we're going to get any emails saying we need to do whatever because we have complaints, I just kind of want to know who the complainants are before we put so much time, everybody's time into trying to figure something out. You know, people do it all the time. Oh, I talked to so many people. It's like, how many people have you talked to? One, two? I, I mean, I always try to get a name. And, and if we can deal with that particular person to help them understand why something was done, you know, but just to say, oh, there were, you know, open meeting complaints, open meeting violation complaints, it's just a very general statement. But anyways, as far as this specific conversation, I think we need to just appoint either a part-time clerk at, at a minimum, an 18-hour clerk.
I agree with you.
We're going to get, we'll get there, we're going to talk about that in a second. But there's, there's a few other responsibilities in our office that I don't think belong there.
Okay.
The, the first thing is, is that town writing, town-wide training initiatives. Any training initiatives should come under the HR director. All the police and fire training is done through the, the police chiefs, the both chiefs, so that, that's not a requirement. But any other training programs should be coordinated through the HR department. And there is tons of training programs, free training programs that are available. And we need to put together a program to do that for the employees, no matter what kind of training it is, whether it's professional training or just training for policies and procedures or whatever it happens to be. So that was coming under the selectman's office responsibility as well, and I don't think it belongs there.
I agree with you. I think that a lot of that, especially for the employees, the gray line is, what do we do with like the boards and the committees? So I agree with you. Anything that is regarding, you know, like we were supposed to have the, the Excel training at the high school, I think that should come under the human resources. You're absolutely right. But my question is, you know, where do the, the committees fall under? That's my only. And, and that, that particular Excel training was, I don't know who, I thought it was getting scheduled through the selectman's office, but we didn't have it because of COVID-19. So I absolutely agree that, you know, anything regarding the employees should really come through the, the, the human resources office, but I just don't know what we do with the committees then, you know, how we handle getting them notified of, like, trainings.
Well, I think you got to define what training is for the committees and boards.
Okay.
And I'm generally in agreement. HR is the, the better place now that we have it for any kind of centralized training. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. The next area is that, for some reason, we were supporting the human resources employee portal. human resources employee, uh, portal. I mean, I would definitely think that that would come under the HR director, would not be a responsibility to select.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm sorry, Rich, what did you say? The HR what?
Uh, portal.
Oh, the portal, okay.
Yeah. Which we need to work on and, uh, get up to date. But that's not a responsibility of, uh, town administrator or executive assistant. And, uh, that should come under the HR director as well.
No, I agree with you on that. That should definitely be under there.
Yep. I, I think that makes sense and the HR director does have some ideas for what they'd like to do with the portal. Um, so I think that would be great if we could empower them to be able to execute on some of their thoughts.
Okay. Um, a couple of other things. Go ahead, Brian.
I was just gonna say, just in the back of our minds, is if, if we are going to talk about transferring these things, let's make sure we just don't shift a burden and make sure that we're giving them the ability to, to do these things.
Okay. Um, there, there seems to be a few, a little confusion about some of the responsibilities of the town administrator. The first thing is that having to do with, uh, grants, um, it says right in the job description that the town administrator, um, is responsible for, um, writing and submitting any, any grant applications for the town. So they're clear on who was supposed to do those things. Um, the other thing is that the town administrator is, um, the, uh, chief procurement officer of the town and is responsible to, uh, according to the job description, is develop specifications for products and services needed by the town, analyze all bids, review with appropriate department heads or elected board, and award contracts, um, and so forth. So, um, it seems to be a little mixed bag and a little confusion as to who's going to do what. And, uh, it's very clear and very specific as to who has these responsibilities. Now, is that doesn't mean that Tracy certainly wouldn't help, you know, help her put the bid documents together or whatever, that's fine. But the ultimate responsibility for initiating anything to do with procurement, you know, starts with the, uh, the town administrator. Everybody agree with that one?
Um, I agree with that one.
How far down are we saying begin with procurement? I mean, if the COA needs to buy materials, are we saying as the CPO, they act as, you know, making sure everything is done correctly, within the law and following the processes?
Well, there's two different levels here, Brian. The first level is maintenance, the maintenance budget, which could include some services or whatever. I'm talking about things that need the chief procurement officer to, uh, decide. Number one, is this, what's the requirements of the chief, of the procurement? Doesn't require a bid, doesn't require contracts, doesn't require whatever. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the individual department that says, well, you know, I gotta call the, um, the company that's gonna come to fertilize our lawns or whatever it happens to be. Okay, I'm talking about specific bids and specific contracts.
Yep, that's fine. If, if we're speaking to the procedural side, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Eric?
Yep.
I could just interject. Um, I just wanted to let the board know that the previous board did send me to procurement school to get my MCPPO because, um, the previous, um, town administrator, the CPO, basically had me doing all the procurement and she would do the final approval. So that's why the board sent me to get my MCPPO.
Okay. Well, I, uh, all the procurement having to do with bidding and contracts and whatever need to start with the town administrator, not with the executive assistant. No offense, Tracy. Okay, uh, does anybody else want to bring anything up?
I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, for this specific agenda item or?
For the specific agenda item, yep.
I mean, I'd just like to know when we think we're going to come to some kind of conclusion. I think this is the second or third meeting. We've talked about it. And I'm sure we've all seen what the office looks like right now. There's a whole lot of work to be done. And I just want to know when we think we're going to come to a consensus on what level of assistance we need to add there.
Well, I, uh, I think that the consensus is that we need either a full-time clerk or a part-time clerk. You know, I, I'm not going to speak for everybody. I mean, I, I heard Lillian say, Lilia said that. But, you know, we got a couple of scenarios here. First of all, you know, do we want to talk about at some point going from 32 hours to 40 hours for our executive assistant? Number one. I was surprised, quite frankly, that it was only 12 hours that that part-time clerk works now. So I would definitely like to see a dedicated clerk in our office to help Tracy on a day-to-day basis. And so if we want to.
Tracy's getting a clerk?
Tracy worked for clerk, yes, she worked for Tracy.
And then Tracy would be able to do the upper-level stuff with the town administrator because she's the executive assistant to the town administrator.
So, uh, do you want us to, you want, uh, Maureen, uh, the, uh, HR director to put together a job description for that position? Or you want to talk about something else?
Um, so are you saying a 40-hour or an 18-hour? Because you're floating, you were floating both.
No, I was, I was saying considering bringing Tracy from 32 hours to 40 hours. That's what I'm saying. Now, if somebody.
I was saying at least a part-time, at least a clerk for 18 hours a week.
I mean, if you want to go for a full-time clerk, fine with me too.
I mean, the money's in the budget for a clerk.
Yeah. So that would mean, let's see here, so we have minus 18. I mean, if there are 18 hours, that would still leave 22 hours a week with one person in the office. We wouldn't have any double coverage if there's phone calls coming in. I mean, I would ask, as the people that are in that office day-to-day, whether Tracy or Maureen, if they feel that there is, um, 12 additional hours, sorry, 22 additional hours worth of work for another clerk?
Well, there's always stuff to be done. Tracy and I have been splitting chores since, um, March now. And, um, you know, it'd be increasing our workload on a daily basis. Um, and I don't think it's any secret that I was not looking for a clerk to fill this role. I was looking for someone that not specifically if they couldn't write grants, but someone that could do all the grant reporting that's required, um, for the specific grants and help out on that. Um, all of those specific skills. Um, and I'm just not sure a clerk is going to address what I need. But is a clerk going to be someone that could work on the Route 79 project as we move forward? And work and, and help organize, um, you know, files and, and spaces and, and make everything updated? Sure, that, that would have value. It would not have as much value as someone with a higher level skill set that could do PR and do, take care of the website and the Facebook and do all those type of things. But I, I, a clerk would have value.
Okay, um, excuse me, go ahead, Maureen.
I just think, um, I think that the clerical person will do a lot of the stuff that takes up some of Tracy's time and then Tracy would be able to, you know, do the website because I thought Tracy used to do a large part of the website anyways.
Sure.
Department started doing all their own. I know Tracy can access it. So I guess what we're saying is, you know, we're gonna sort of elevate the person that's been there with the historical knowledge, you know, and then have a clerical person come in to help ease up some of her stuff so she can help you with some of the stuff that the coordinator was helping you with before.
Sure. And, you know, uh, as for me, I would just hope that I would have been able to structure the department the way my department heads were able to structure their departments with their own input on what's best for the department.
Well, we're talking about it right now. I mean, you haven't come forward, you haven't come forward with any proposal, Maureen.
I have come forward and you chose not to acknowledge the proposals.
Um, the, excuse me, the proposal that you came forward with was for a planner, a grant writer, and somebody else. Do you, excuse me, excuse me, please. How are you going to fill that position, all those opportunities with one person? You weren't. You weren't gonna get a town planner, a pie, pie for a part-time plow planner, a part-time grant writer, and anything else that you want that person to do. That wasn't gonna work. Was it? How would you find that person?
I obviously thought there was a chance that it could work as I worked on the job description to make it work. However, i- if that's not what the board wanted, I, I would have thought crossing off the things that the board didn't want and, and working from that template on the things that we could agree from would have been a better course of action.
Um, I tried to discuss it at the last meeting and we got pushed off. Now, my, and that's why I'm discussing it this meeting because it's obvious that we have problems in the office that need to be addressed and they need to be addressed now. Okay? Because we don't have the necessary resources to do the job in the selectman's office.
So my, uh, uh, I, you know, the, my. My, my issue here is I don't really want to hire someone else who doesn't have experience in our Lakeville selectman's office. I, I, I think we have a good resource in the executive assistant that we have. I mean, uh, you know, as the chief procurement officer, Tracy does have procurement too. So for an example, something like what had happened last year with the building of the police station and all those procurement records. I mean, Tracy could have done all the legwork on that and kept our side of the records. I mean, I can, I can see how, you know, she could do the coordination of stuff. Um, I, Tracy writes, not, I don't know Tracy. I don't have your resume in front of me, but I would think that you could at least assist in grant writing. I know you do some grant writing yourself. So I, I don't think this is about qualifications. I just think that, um, we need some help in there to someone to answer the phone. I make a motion that we hire a full-time clerk for the selectman's office.
Would you entertain an amendment to go back to the combination position? Pull out the planner because obviously we know that's a very tough position to fill right now and see if there is any elements of what used to be called the coordinator position to add to that job, that job description. So clerk perhaps plus a couple other key elements that we think we need help on.
Where?
Well, I didn't know we were going to be talking about that description, so I need to pull that up and look for it.
You mean the one that was presented at the last meeting?
No, coordinator position.
Yeah, the one that was like the planner slash essay, I think it was. Have to go back.
The planner slash who?
Uh, wasn't it like the planner and special assistant? Sorry, I wasn't prepared to go find that at this moment.
That was the, um, that was the planner, grant writer, special assistant to the town administrator.
That was August fifth, is this the one?
Okay, but.
Last meeting.
Again, folks, um, I'm, I'm trying to call out the obvious here. Tracy isn't a, you know, a planner as a career, but she has planning experience. I think everything you're looking for, we have right in the person that's in our office. So the easy part is to train someone to do some of the other clerical stuff. We have a person who has a whole lot of skill sets and I, I think we can, I think we can try to use those. So if we, before we throw any more work though at her, I think we need to get her some help so that someone can print off the 150, you know, appointment forms and, you know, do the, the packets. I mean, these packets alone, regardless of whether she's printing them or not, still take her, you know, five hours to put together. So.
Um, can I, I gotta just come back on one thing, Brian?
Yes.
The, um, the police chief, the fire chief, and the library director, they file for all their own grants. Nothing comes through the selectman's office, so they do it all on their own. So that's why you just, when you just mentioned the one that the fire chief, uh, we got the other day, that was submitted by the fire chief.
Yeah, that's written, that's written by one of his, uh, lieutenants. Um, but yeah, I've written multiple grants since I've been here, um, but.
I was just talking about responsibilities, uh.
Sure, sure. But, um, just as far as the reporting responsibilities, they're just different with like the MVP and the Green Communities Grant as far as just the continuous follow-up, the quarterly follow-up and the narrative that goes with it. And it's just a little different. Um, so it's a little bit more involved. Um, but the more people writing grants, the merrier it is, the better it is for the town. Um, and the more grant writing experience people have and bring to the table, it's just a better proposition for the town.
And, and I'm not saying in any way that Tracy can't do that, so please don't read into that that way. Um, my thought is I always like having people cross-trained and then we've, if we have multiple people in our office that can do the same things, then it doesn't matter who picks up the phone. If somebody's out and then they get a call on that grant, they can answer it, do whatever needs to be done. That's my concern is I just don't want to see us put all of our eggs in one basket and then something changes and we no longer have that skill set and then have to ramp somebody up from scratch. So clerk could be great, but if we can include a couple bullet points where we think additional skills are beneficial, fine.
I, 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 I just, Rich, I just wanna, uh, but the only thing I'm saying here is the grant writing responsibility is supposed to be that of the town administrators. So why do we need an assistant who can do grant writing anyways? I guess that's not, I, I, I see the town administrator needing assistance from a clerical person to, I don't know, print it off, get it where it's supposed to be, whatever. So, um, anyways.
Well, I think to follow up on that, uh, when, when we did the, uh, COA and we did the library, uh, we actually hired, uh, a grant writer to write those grants.
Yeah.
Because they're very complex grants, which also included the, uh, federal government and so forth. So in isolated, you know, circumstances, depending upon the type of the grant and the dollar amount of the grant, then you hire somebody to, um, to write, you know, those, those, uh, grants for us. So there's plenty of people out there that we can hire to help do grant writing if we need to do grant writing. Um, one other follow-up having to do with this, uh, this position that we talked about. As far as Route 79 is concerned, which is later on in the agenda, the clerical, we would be hiring a separate, uh, clerical person just to work on the Route 79, uh, project. So this clerical person would not be doing the work for the 79 project. And based upon the schedule that we have, we don't need that clerical person until, uh, spring of 2021. So don't mix up the, uh, the, these two, these two positions. And that clerical function, um, would be paid out of the project. And in my opinion, you know, should be under the jurisdiction of the, uh, DPW director since it's his project. Okay, so, um, Lilia, did you make a motion or is that still pending?
I've made a motion for an 18-hour a week clerk and I can say, subject to a job description, seeing a job description, if that'll make everyone happy. I just really hate to just keep delaying decisions and delaying decisions.
I'm with you. I, I thought you said full-time. I apologize. Did you say full-time?
Yeah, I had you written down as full-time.
Okay, so full-time.
Yeah, that's why I asked about the amendment or not, but I like the idea of the job description, but let's not kick it around for nine months.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, so where are we? We've got full-time on?
That full-time clerical position.
Okay.
Uh, in the selectman's office.
Dedicated to the selectman's office.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Uh, just discussion so the board knows that this, uh, job description has to be approved by the, uh, wage and personnel board. So, uh, that would be at the next meeting, so you know.
Okay, so being a union position, that would not be non. Okay, so being a union position, that would be non-confidential as well?
Pardon me?
So it'd be a union position, so it also would be non-confidential, correct?
The union or is it not?
We can do it either way.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the selectmen's office has access to so much confidential information, so.
Do we want to figure that out later?
Yeah, can we figure that out later?
Well, we'll put some thought into it, into the description, and then we'll have some, some salary and wage charts available.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
AB and I.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is discuss and finalize the process to hire an interim treasurer and tax collector. I, I thought at the last meeting that we were going to finalize that at this meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda. And I asked Maureen, you know, to put it on the agenda for the board to review. And there's a couple of things that we need to talk about. The first thing is, is that, you know, the question is that if you were going to hire somebody who's retired or a consulting firm, you know, to help, you know, for this interim, first of all, I think it always should be two to three days a week because you're not going to find, you're not going to hire, you're not going to blame it or hire because they won't, a full-time retired, you know, treasurer and collector. So that's number one. Number two is that we have to, well, this is already, you know, September 1st and, you know, according to the letter we received from the treasurer-collector, she's leaving on November 2nd, so there's not a lot of time, you know, to get this in place. So I don't know if the board has had, board members have had a, a opportunity to review, you know, the job description for an interim or not?
I have.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions about it?
Not specifically. I had a similar thought that I'm not necessarily looking for somebody five days a week for the interim, really looking for somebody just coming with a fresh set of eyes and say, here, here are the things you're doing great, here are the things where, you know, there's chance for updates and, you know, kind of act in that consultant-like role for a while, while we get our full-time person in place later on. So that could be two, three days a week for that kind of person.
Okay, one of the other questions I forgot to say is how long do we want? Do we want to say six months, three months? Now, you gotta, we gotta also remember that, you know, we're waiting for the legislature to approve, you know, going from elected and appointed and between now and the November election, they're not doing anything, you know, they're not going to be meeting or whatever. That's just the way it is when it comes to a presidential election, so. So I would, I would be surprised if we got lucky, they would get it approved by December, so.
I would suggest a minimum of six months. That way it gives us some consistency and I think it's more appealing for someone for six months. Dedicate, you know, not three, you know, but I, I think we should cover ourselves for at least six months.
I had like, so the spring town meeting in my head, which would be, that's right around six or seven months, depending on when we have it. So yeah, similar to what Leah said.
Okay, so we'll post it for six months.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll intitiate a motion to approve the job description and post the, the position. And I would say that we post this position on the MMA website and the Treasurer-Collectors Association website.
Look at where there's, there was two typos in there, so just could we make it contingent on correcting the two typos? One of them was the title of the job, it should say. Tracy, what's the official way it should be reading?
I spoke to the current treasurer-tax collector and she said if we wanted to just keep it as treasurer-collector, that would be fine. Or we could do treasurer-tax collector.
Up to the board. Okay, and did we want to set a salary before you do that, like an hourly rate?
I don't think, I don't think we're ready to do that until we see what kind of interest. And basically, the way it should read is that we'd be subject to, what's that term, experience? And there's a word, there's a, there's a.
Contingent.
Commiserate.
Yeah.
Market rate commiserate with experience.
Yeah, I know that we talked to.
Experience, did you say?
Yes, we talked to Corinne, she'll, she'll, she has that one.
All right, so we'll just change a few wordings around, but the content is fine for everybody?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with treasurer-collector. If you want us to change it to tax collector, I think anyone qualified for the job knows that it's tax.
I have no preference on that.
Instead of a, and instead of a dash, you could probably just put a backslash there.
Oh, we'll get on that. There we go.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
AB and I.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is discuss and review the changes, an update for the Loon Pond Lodge management and bartending agreements.
Mr. Chair, before you start, did everybody get that letter that I sent out by email late this afternoon?
I did.
Yes, Tracy, thank you.
Okay.
So I think I'd like us to make some, some decisions tonight, which would help me a lot. I've looked at some of the procurement stuff from before and Tracy got all that and I talked to Maureen about it too. And I, again, I'm not quite sure, you know, why we pay $3,000 a month to the management company. I mean, I, I can see, you know, why they may have done that thinking that we would get the coverage, whether the phone was ringing or not. But after talking with several, all but two, well, three out of the five park commissioners individually, most of them too feel, you know, that $3,000 a month is a lot of money. Some, you know, for myself, I know when this, when this whole thing started, we hired a person, they worked for the town of Lakeville and that person was the, you know, event coordinator. Basically, they did that job. Well, for whatever reason, I wasn't around, so I don't know, it was decided to go with a company to do the management. But I mean, I would think that company to do the management, their incentive would be profit. So, you know, the first question we need to, first of all, the first question we need to have answered is, do we want to extend the contract with the current, with the current management company? That's the first question. The second question is, if we don't want to do that, then we really have to fine-tune these details so I can get this done. But it seems like more people than not are like, why are we paying $3,000 a month to a for-profit company? So I don't know the answer to that question. I didn't do this. So if you guys have any, any thoughts on this, you know, I know that we had discussed the timing of the contract and everything else. Everything else is secondary to these two questions. Number one, do we want to extend the contract with the current management company? And if that's the case, I think Maureen and I and Tracy figured out that it has to be the contract as it is. If that happens, then we can take the next, whatever, let's say we extend the contract for a year, we can take the next year and really figure this, this out. Otherwise, if we don't want to extend the contract, then going forward, we need to figure out this money thing. I mean, you know, there's, there's management companies, there's bartending companies. We could hire a Lakeville person to do this 18 hours a week. And that's, you know, we could hire, we could have a Lakeville employee do this 18 hours a week, you know. So I, I'm not quite sure where you guys, this would be the time to make the change, but that change would be done kind of quickly right now, big decisions. Or we can extend the contract. So we need to answer those two questions right now.
We won't, what number year is the contract in right now?
It's in last year, so, yeah.
And the term of the contract extension term, the term may be extended for an additional term up to three years by mutual written agreement of the parties.
Yep, and of course, if we agree to extend it, then, you know, we need to come to that agreement too, so.
So, may I interrupt, Mr. Chair? I just wanted to add in, we should extend it for the one month, no matter what, to make it till December 31st, to make that official. Because that's when our.
Liquor license.
Liquor license expires and we should have that covered just as a housekeeping issue in general, if, if we were going to vote any other way besides, you know, do a full.
They would have to agree to that month as well.
It'd be, actually, it'd be two months. Because this ends on November something here.
Oh, I thought it was the end of November, okay.
Let me just double-check, three years. Three years from, I thought it was November 5th, maybe I'm wrong.
I know it's November.
Yeah, I don't have my, I have just.
It would just be till December 31st would be the extension to make it coincide with the ending of the liquor license.
So is that, I can get the folder here if you want and tell you. Is that what you want to do, is extend it to the end of December and then work from there? They may not agree to that, I don't know.
And that's the thing, you know, I think that's the, I think that is, you know, I agree with Maureen that, you know, we should at least go through the end of the year because that's the, when the liquor license would be up anyways, so.
I would entertain that, but I think at the end of three years, it's always good to step back and.
Take a look.
Make sure, make sure things were working well for both sides. You've put a ton of work into this already, which has been amazing, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, but see, I'm, I'm, I'm like, that's exactly what I've been doing and I'm coming up with more questions and answers, you know.
Right.
I know that there was a person that was hired and, you know, she did exactly that. She was there like 18 hours a week. I don't think that was a full-time position. Tracy, do you remember if it was full-time or part-time?
I'm not sure if it was full-time. It might have been, it might not have been 40 hours, but it might have been more than 18 hours a week.
Yeah, I was on finance committee at that time and if I recall correctly, which, you know, would be a miracle at this point, it would be, they had a base of 18 hours and then they were there for the actual events. So their being there was dependent on what events went on in addition to their regular hours, if I'm remembering it correctly.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me then if they charged their hours back to the event then, just included it right in the fee.
So I'm looking at my copy of the event management agreement and you literally could not tell me what date that says in November. It's all scratched out and, and copied over, so I can't make out the, the date of.
But it is November, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I get, well, he signed it on November 23rd. But I can't remember.
I mean, while you're looking, Rich, I'll just keep narrating here. But everything else is all secondary to these decisions, you know. Do we want to, you know, like more record-keeping and, you know, the incentive part and, you know, all that stuff? Everything is secondary to these, these questions right now, what, you know. And if you want, I would be happy to call the current management person, the man who, you know, Mr. Fuller, who has the management company and talk to him and, you know, see if he's interested in extending. You know, I'll do whatever the board, whatever the board wants.
According to what I see, it's November 1st.
So then we would have to extend, I mean, it makes sense to extend to December 31st because that's when the liquor license is up.
Yep.
Yeah, I would be okay with that, at least give them the option and then we can figure out what to do.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I could, you know, by talking to him, I could get a sense too of, you know, if we completely knew contract, you know, how things could be affected. And I just, I just don't want to not have the company if we have functions already booked.
Yeah, but my, my thought is that if we extend it to the end of the year, that, that's a one-time extension and then we go back to RFP at that point because there are things in the contract, I think everybody agrees, needed work. You put in a lot of time to do that. And I don't want to leave them hanging, wondering like, oh, are they going to come extend again and again and again? I think, I would suggest that we extend it to the end of the year to align with the liquor license and then we move on and then we put out a new RFP with the new, with new needs and they absolutely can bid again. They might be the best people to come around again.
Yeah, and honestly, I know they started off this with having like a Lakeville employee, so to speak, an employee of Lakeville that was the events coordinator. I, you know, I would feel, I, it would be my opinion that we have a management company. Talk about cross-training. I mean, if that person's out sick or can't make a function, you know, whereas the management company, they're more equipped to do this kind of stuff. But yes, then we have to look at the contract, so, you know, I, all right. Well, I'll make a motion then that we extend the current contract to December 31st, 2020. And of course, that means we'll have to speak with the current people to make sure they're okay with that.
Yes, we would need their agreement, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
AB and I.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to update and discuss the IT plan. A couple of meetings ago, we got an update, actually, it's, yeah, a couple of meetings ago, we got an update of where we were and I guess Maureen has updated it. We got it about four o'clock this afternoon of the updated of the, the IT plan. As you know, and we've known for a while, that the, our IT director is leaving us and I thought it was November 1st, but now he's leaving at the end of October. But I am concerned about the main things, you know, that need to be addressed. And one of the main ones is the email server, you know, which needs to be updated and replaced, which could, can be and could, could be a challenging thing, you know, to get done. I know he's working on that. Some of these other things that are listed on here, upgrading a laptop to Windows 10, something to do with hardwiring at Ted Williams Camp, which probably shouldn't be a priority. But, you know, credit card acceptance at the Park to Prom, and I don't think that's a priority right now because we won't be doing that for a while. Updating the wireless network, that should be a priority. And having to do with a Chromebook equivalent for selectmen and tablets for the inspectional services. I know that Leah has been on this for months, you know, trying to get, you know, her replacement for her laptop. So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure this now is changed to a Chromebook equivalent for the selectmen. I'm not sure what that means.
Um, it, originally, we tried to get Chromebooks, but they were impossible to get because they were all going to the schools. So we got, you know what, a lower-end laptop with, uh, video capabilities, um, and the ability to VPN to the shared drive. So it, it's a, I don't know what brand he ended up going with, but it's, it's a, it's not like a Surface Pro or a MacBook. It's a, it's a, um, it's a lower-end, um, laptop, that's all.
Okay, does that have printing capability and so forth?
Everything, it has all the capabilities that you'll need to do it. It's just not, you know, it's not a Rolls-Royce, uh, version.
How big is the screen?
Um, I had written down fifteens, but I, I'll have to confirm, um, and you can hook it up to your monitor.
What monitor?
So we have monitors. Got lots of them, because you're going to have a, you're going to have the desk, um, station, and there's a monitor that you'll be able to hook up to.
Well, we're going to talk about that. I think we need a permanent PC workstation in that conference room for the selectmen, so the selectmen can go in and work on that workstation and access, but not using a Chromebook.
Yeah, but it, it's not a Chromebook, but it, it will be able to use it in the way that you need to use it.
Okay, I don't want to, I really don't want it, to be honest with you. I just want a workstation in the selectman's office that I can go and work on. I don't want to have to bring a Chromebook from my house into that office to use it and connect up every time we want to use it. I just want a workstation, and this is what we talked about months ago, didn't we?
A workstation? That, that's fairly recent, but we.
Leah, help me out.
Yeah, no, Rich has been asking for a workstation. I've been asking for, because I, I spend, I don't, I don't come to town hall as much. So I've always said, uh, some, and, and you know what? I don't care if it's not a Cadillac. I'll take.
Yeah, no, it'll, it'll, it'll serve all the needs. I, I, I wouldn't get anything less.
Yeah, but Rich, I think, I remember Rich always saying, he just wants to be able to come to town hall and print some stuff out.
Well, I want to blame it access to databases, which currently we don't have any access to any of the databases as well.
I'm, I'm probably going to give Tracy three hours a week back, once I have a laptop, so she doesn't have to go fetch everything for me.
Well, I mean, see, that, I mean, that's the other problem, is that, you know, I'm using my printer at home. And, you know, that's becoming pretty expensive, you know, to do that. So if I come into the office and I said, okay, I want this report or whatever, then I could just print it. I wouldn't have to bother Tracy.
Right.
Wouldn't have to say to Tracy, hey, print this out for me, put it in my mailbox. I'd print it out myself.
Right now, I, you know, pretty much go off my phone, and, you know, I'm always saying to Tracy, can you get me that document? I know you sent it to me in March, but it's dropped off my phone, and then if I have connection problem, I can't get in, then I still have to print it. So if I at least have the, a bigger screen, I can read it right there, and I don't have to print it. I can get into the, you know, to the drive myself and find it.
Do we want to segue from this update to item twenty-three? I feel like we're already kind of talking about it, the interim IT.
Yeah, I mean, it almost seems like it's the same.
We could, we could do that, um, with a clarification. At the last meeting, we talked about an IT director, okay? And we asked the town administrator to put together, to come back with us with, uh, a list of towns and how much they get paid. You know, if ID directors or MIS directors, whatever you want to call them, and the list that we received were for towns that were two, three times the size of us. There wasn't one town that surrounds us having to do with an IT, uh, director or services or whatever.
As you know, this is a voluntary process when we ask for this information. So, you know, I, I did ask for voluntary disclosures, but I can follow up with in-person phone calls, but that was the information from all the towns when they submitted it.
Okay, but I just, you know, none of them were our size, right?
I wouldn't say that, but I wasn't looking at them for that specific criteria. I was going on a market search for the position, because the size has just as much to do with it as the org structure, and we didn't get the org structure either. So if you have a moderately sized, um, place where, um, they have an IT director, but they have someone separate for the police station, well, then it, it kind of nullifies the idea that the size of the, the town would make the difference if the duties were split, because most of the time, the biggest piece of the pie is the email or the police and fire. So, um, I didn't have structure on that form either, so I'm following up with structure too. How many people are in the department? Does the person take care of all of the needs of the town, or is extra part farmed out, et cetera?
I mean, doesn't it have to do with some of our, you know, end users, how many end users we have, and, you know?
Uh, there's, there's a base, there's a, you know, there's a base that you'd get to, but it, it is a pretty competitive field for salary. Uh, but the thing that we're offering that some other places aren't is a lot of people, um, a- as far as businesses, they want to use people as contractors, and we're offering to hire someone full-time. But, yeah, the end users, um, I, I've never used that as a calculation in anything I've ever done for an IT person.
I guess I look at it this way, in thirty days, when our IT person is no longer here, what are we going to do when we flip the lights on on that Monday morning, let's say, and someone's computer doesn't work? So, that's thirty days away. I don't know if we should be trying to just get a company right now, or to cover us, or, and I have to defer to anyone else, because I am zero expert, uh, in, in some of hiring tech folks.
Certainly not enough time to post and get somebody in, not only in, but ramped up and cross-trained over on what we have. So I think we're kind of forced into a service, at least in the, the meantime. And then we can figure, and then we can take some time to figure out what sort of structure we want. I mean, it's nice to see that the list we have this time appears to have gotten, uh, shorter from last time. So Tim's been banging through and getting some of these projects done, which is good. Uh, I don't know if we want to have a working session with him and just say, hey, what do you think you're going to be able to get done in the next month or so? You know, what's realistic, at least, and maybe some stretch goals. I'm looking at the list now. Because that, I think, is going to set us up for what we really want to say, yep, we, we got to get this work done now that it's started, and then figure out what's, what's left. We might have to hire consulting services to just drag these across the finish line, and then figure out what we need for staffing after the fact.
I mean, you know, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, because, like I said, I'm zero the tech person, but I would think that if we could unload, you know, I, the way I look at it is you have the administrative part, and then you have like the engineering part, which is literally Tim running wires and, you know, so even if he stays on, you know, an extra couple of weeks to finish that work, at least we would have taken the email and all that other stuff off of his plate. So I, you know, I, I just don't know if it's, we can just get a company who can just do the support for us right now? Is that, does that exist?
It's kind of challenging. So like, with what Tim's been working on, he's, he's going through kind of like the, the debt that we haven't worked on for years, from what I've seen so far. So even if he gets through these projects, I mean, it's very easy for all of us to say like, job done, move on, that work, we don't have to worry about anymore. But then it's the ongoing maintenance, and, and most of these things require at least some level of interface every month to get them up to date, make sure things are running white, running properly, and, you know, fixing things behind the scenes the end users might not see. That alone could take up a lot of, more than half the week, just for all the various systems we have. And then there is the whole user servicing part of it. So I think, I mean, I've been looking at this for the last couple of weeks, and I'm conflicted that we're going to find someone that can do both roles that we need for the, the salary that's there, just due to the market competitiveness right now. I mean, the, the hiring and having the benefits is, is a, is a draw. That's good. There's not a lot of places you can get that. Most places now, it's just hiring a consultant, and they're on their own to pay for the health insurance and whatnot. But where you're going to feel the most pain right up front is the, the end user services, and people being used to having somebody around that they can call and comes to their desk. So I, I think we've got a challenge in our hands, for sure. The next week, I mean, get as many projects done as we can, so that whoever takes over from there has less to do, hopefully. But I'm struggling to see us doing this well with one person in the future.
Uh, I kind of agree with you. Like I said, I don't know a whole lot. I've talked to my friends. They've tried to dumb it down for me. And what they've said is that we're really lucky that we've had Tim who can sort of do everything, so, um, but I, that's still, it still remains when he's gone, who's going to, you know, on day one, when someone's email is down? So should we just going to try to find a company just to have them?
Uh, selectmen Fabian, um, so the hourly rate is pretty prohibitive for a company to, to provide those type of, you know, desktop support services. We were looking anywhere from like one-twenty to one-fifty an hour at some cases. It might serve us to go out and get a temporary person to do just desktop support for the small problems, and then farm out the larger issues to, um, to one of the firms that we had looked out previously, that is already, um, qualified to, to do those projects. Um, we, I have one in mind right now that was, uh, the best price and was able to do all of the things Tim can do. But would the board be amenable to a solution, like a hybrid solution for the interim? Where we would do what we needed to do and, and get together, um, someone for the higher-level projects and the emergencies, and, and the stuff that we need the higher level, and then have maybe someone for eighteen hours a week for desktop support?
I'm, I'm for whatever doesn't give us any gap in, in coverage.
Yeah, I would, I would be open to it. I mean, i- if anything, we start, um, just looking at the projects list over here on my monitor, and you might have to just do job contracts to get some of these projects done individually. And then, yeah, hire somebody part-time, three-quarters time for the desktop stuff. Have we had, I know it's probably been too early to say, but has Tim been able to get people to start filling out forms, just to have an idea of what a, a week looks like?
He's been, um, he's been collecting them for two weeks now, I believe.
Okay, yeah, kind of soon, but.
Yep.
At least people are doing it.
What kind of problems are they having?
So he's going to give me a list of them. Uh, he said he'll give that to me at the end of the week, and he'll just give me all of them that I can go through. He hasn't collected them and gone through and analyzed it.
I just, um, I still would like to know communities around us, especially the smaller ones, you know, what they're doing. Are they doing contracted services, combinations, you know, thereof?
Yeah, well, they, they have all sorts of weird things, and I'll, I'll get you some more answers, but I know Free Town, it's the town administrator gets a special stipend for being the IT director too. And then they have, you know, a different structure in the police and, and all that, so it, it's very different from town to town.
No, I understand that, but, you know, we're not going to spend two-hundred thousand dollars for IT support, which is not going to do that. And, you know, so it's a combination of that, I think that two levels here. One level is to support the servers and support the network and whatever, and based upon what Tim has done and completed in upgrading, you know, the systems and so forth. Doesn't mean they don't have to be monitored, but, you know, they have alerts and everything that they would alert a person, whoever is responsible. But God, we better not have a lot of, a lot of problems, you know, with some of our systems, with all the money that we'll put up, you know, to put these systems in place, number one. Number two is all the software. If there's a software problem, an application software problem, we have maintenance agreements, you know, for all those as well, which is costing us a ton of money, you know, to do as well. So I think we're primarily talking about, you know, a server problem, or, uh, email server failure, uh, those type of things. But a normal day-to-day, you know, problem with a desktop or a printer or whatever, we can't jump, you know, just because we have one problem with a printer. We need to consolidate all these issues, and we haven't been doing that. You know, when somebody has a problem, they call Tim, and Tim comes and, and fixes it. I, you know, those days are over, you know, that in a lot of cases, you know, it becomes a crutch, you know, for the employee, and not picking on the employee, because it's been available to them. So I think we need to do a lot more work on this before we make a decision, but that's me. But as I said, it should have been done months ago, but, okay, so what do you want to do?
Uh, I mean, I'd like to have some kind of working session with Tim and figure out what's left, what, what is realistic to get done. If the board would like to vote to have me do that with Tim, I'd be happy to. If you guys want to schedule something during the day, I'd be happy to take some time off and do that. Outline what's left.
Yeah, I agree with that. If you need a motion, Rich, otherwise I'd be happy to let Brian run with that IT project.
I don't have a problem with that either.
And, and, and actually, like I said, this is not my area of expertise whatsoever, um, Brian, and I trust, you know, I trust your judgment, your opinion on, you know, on, on a lot of things. So I, if you could make a recommendation too for us, you know?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I mean, I'm, I'll make a, uh, an effort to get with Tim and spend some time with him, if you're out what's left, what's most, what's most necessary, and then, um, try to outline some options and come back to the board with some recommendations, then we can go from there.
And, uh, just so you know, Timmy, you can ask Brian as well, because I did call him when I got it, when he, uh, sent in his resignation, and, uh, he said that he would not leave us an alert, you know, having to do with, um, you know, supporting the servers and the networking or whatever. So if we had a problem, you know, he'd be available to us until we, you know, stabilized with what we're doing, just so you know.
That'd be great. I just don't want us to rely on it too much. We're going to.
Right.
We have a plan.
Okay, you want to make a motion? You just go ahead and do it, Brian.
Uh, make a motion, just make it official. It'll be, make me feel better.
I make a motion that we appoint or nominate Brian to work with, uh, Tim Graybar's our IT person to assess our needs going forward, and then report back to the board.
Okay, you second that motion, Brian?
Uh, I second the motion.
Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Uh, the camera, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, uh, number thirteen on the agenda. Don't worry, we, we still only have thirty-plus to go. Discussing finalizing the, uh, union contracts, um, just so the board knows. Uh, we have received back, uh, the draft contracts, um, from, uh, town council for all the union contracts. Uh, my question for the board is, um, does the board want to review them first? Or do you want us to send them to the union, for the union to review for their comments for accuracy and so forth?
I'd wait, I'd rather see it after, but I can go either way on that one.
It's up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
I mean, I, I'm assuming it's just small things at this point, so I'm, I'm fine waiting. If there's any major changes, maybe send an alert.
That's fine, and then, uh, the final review, um, would be, uh, by the board, uh, at a meeting, and then the contracts would be signed, so. Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll send the drafts, you know, to the, uh, to the unions. Maureen, can you make sure that there's a, a date on each one of the, um, the drafts on the top of the documents, so we know which, which document they're working with? Because these have a, a tendency to have, uh.
Multiple revisions, yeah, okay.
So would you do that, please? Okay, do that. Okay, next thing is the.
Did you and I want to get together and, uh, because I had a few corrections on the union contracts of a few things that I found? And then I, I'm sure you found a couple too. And then I I'm sure you found a couple too.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
All right, the next thing is to provide an update on the marijuana host agreements. The first thing is the first thing is that as the board knows, Twisted Growers, which is the one out on Route 44, has requested that they have a cultivation facility and now they want to open a retail facility as well. Well, currently, their agreement is for both at the same location. Now, since it's at a separate location, we have to have a cultivation agreement because this is required by the Cannabis Commission that we have a separate agreement for each location of each facility. So we've been working with the town council, you know, to draft up new agreements and those are in the process, I believe, that that Amy has already sent them to them for their review. We haven't heard back from them as well. But a couple of things that are important to the agreements, and I know that we've discussed this in the past, that having to do with the each cultivation agreement is based on $25 a pound. And the retail is 3%, you know, of the sales. So we are proposing to Twisted Growers that it be 3% of the sales and not $25 a pound. Now, one of the reasons, the primary reasons because of that is because I've looked at, quite frankly, dozens of other agreements. And most of the other agreements that what I can see and just one recently in in Middleborough, you know, theirs is 3% and not done by the poundage. So we went to Nature's Remedy last week, I believe it was, or maybe the week before. Now, I can't remember. And so we saw their facility and very nice facility. They they do a very nice job. But something came to surface, you know, having to do with how we're gonna get paid. And the way we get paid is that, you know, you got a marijuana plant and help me out there, Brian. They cut the flower off on the top of the plant and they weigh that, okay? And that's what gets sent to the state. And that's how we are supposed to get paid is by the weighing of that plant, which is recorded by the state. So currently, we would get $25 a pound. So I said to them, gee, what what is marijuana selling for right now? And it's $3,400 a pound. So if you look at that on $25 a pound, we're getting about 0.7% of the cost of $3,400 a pound, whereas if we had getting it at 3%, then, you know, that would be over that'll be over $100 a pound, which would be significant difference for how we get paid. But another thing came up was that once they cut the plant, then they take the the balance of that plant and they put it through a process and that process then generates CDC oils, okay, that go in a vial and they sell those. And then they also make products out of that C V C V T D V oil into you know, candy, edibles, thank you, edibles or whatever. Well, time to find out, looking at the contract, all the contracts that we have, there's no provision in the contract for us to get paid for those products. Because if it's based on a per pound basis, it's impossible to weigh those products and get paid for those products based upon $25 a pound. So I'm gonna have to talk to town council, review all these agreements, and we're gonna have to meet with these people and tell them, hey, we're supposed to be paid for these products. How do we get paid for? So that's kinda, you know, where we are, you know, right now, that all these agreements gotta be looked at and they all have to be modified. Anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to say your recollection was correct from that informational visit. As you said, once the flower was harvested, that was weighed by pound and then the leaves, clippings, et cetera, after that, like you said, extracted into the oils. Eventually turned into the the edibles and everything else. And I I also came away kind of scratching my head, wondering, well, how do we measure that? That's a very different process.
Um, I I I agree, Rich. I don't know what the thought process was when, you know, we started signing these agreements, the previous board. Maybe it was gonna, you know, it was whatever. Maybe they thought it was gonna go in a different direction, you know, whatever. But and again, all this marijuana stuff, all the rules, everything has changed significantly since it started. So I think we have to do what's in front of us and even if that means amend each contract as they come up for renewal, you know, to the 3%, I think we're leaving a lot of money on the table that the town, you know, that we could really use for the town. So.
Well, I mean, they're selling these products now and we have no idea.
Right. Right, when I had gone on the Nature's Remedy tour, I had brought that up too. And, you know, and I said, well, you know, about record keeping and everything else and, you know, it just didn't make sense to me. Since that time, though, I've had a lot of time to study, read up on, you know, a lot of the legislation and how it came forward and this, that, and the other thing. And I think I would be happier with 3%. Doing the math is much easier. I just don't know, you know, how we, you know, I I think we may have to wait for, you know, time to renew or something, but I it we certainly need to look into, you know, the CBD oil stuff. But yeah, I think we shouldn't be, we we're in office because the people in Lakeville think we can do a good job. I I don't think we're doing a good job if we're leaving all this money on the table, so.
Okay, we'll contact town council and follow up with this and I guess we'll probably I have to, because we asked the we asked the question of the Brian was there too. I mean, we asked the question of the owner. You know, of how we were gonna get paid and he kind of scratched his head and said, oh, we didn't address that issue in the contract. So. So I said, well, we're gonna address that issue.
Yeah, we should address that issue, right. Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on that?
Selectmen with camera, I have a quick question that we haven't discussed on the HCAs in general. When we do start to collect on them, is that gonna go through the town administrator's office, the board of selectmen office? Are we gonna move that down to the treasurer collector?
Well, any payments that would come through, I would think, would just like any other fund that gets into the town goes into the treasurer's office.
Yeah, so we don't have anything officially that has that set up. I just didn't know if we wanted to talk about that at all or.
It's well, any any funds that come into the town, whether it's state aid funds or taxes.
Keeping track of it and making sure it's being collected on time and all that, so.
Well, we're supposed to get reports from the state on a quarterly basis, you know, as to what. And I was soon then we would keep a file, but if as the payments are coming in, they would get put in by the treasurer and then the treasurer would report it to accounting and then accounting would keep track of the receipts for each facility, but I'm sure that we'd have to have someplace to keep track of all the files. And record reports by the state. Now, this other thing could be a unique situation. I I don't know, but, you know. Because we have no, we have no idea what what they're doing. All of this is, we're not picking on Nature's Remedy, by the way. It's all of them.
It's a cloudy area. I think it's this is one of those things that we're all gonna come out of with this first round of contracts and figure out where where we need some clarity.
Okay, any other questions? Next on the agenda is update 61A, 61, 61, 61A and 61B process and policy. Do you want to give us an update on that?
Yes, my update is I haven't done anything on it other than talked to a couple more people, so I got nothing. I'm I was wondering why it was on here. I thought that I I was just curious why I don't have anything to report. I'm actually working with Lillian on some of the codification stuff, which we have an October deadline, so I've been reading codification stuff.
Okay.
Was there any questions, any specific questions on it? Is that why it's here? Okay.
I don't have any specific questions. And I know you've been putting a lot of time into three or four of these projects, so I I think it's it's totally worth having there. And if you've got something new and interesting worth sharing, then go for it. If not.
You know what? Maybe we can just for future sake, just because of the workload here. As soon as I have it done, I can I'll let Rich know and I pretty much just have to sit down and type the whole thing up, so. All my notes, find all my sketch papers. But I'll let I'll let you know, Rich, when I'm done. And then, like I said, I think I said something about I'd really like you guys to have it for at least a week because it's not that easy to read, so.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss selectmen's office layouts for layout for offices, file storage and meeting space. Oh, months ago, I had brought up that we don't have a conference room. You know, in the town office building, which is, to me, was completely unacceptable. And so we have created a conference room now in the selectmen office area. And there seems to be confusion or misunderstanding as to what that conference room is going to be. And the conference room is a conference room table. And we agreed that we would put in a workstation for the selectmen to go in and work in there. And for that matter, other people, other committees and boards could do it, you know, as well. Now, according to the town administrator, she was under the impression that the part-time clerk would have her desk in there, all right? And we never discussed that as part of an option. As a matter of fact, that particular 12-hour a week employee works for the HR director and doesn't even work for the board of selectmen. So there's a desk upstairs near the assistant HR person that she very easily could work up there. So I have no idea why this is an issue at all.
Um, I was in there and I really liked the six-person table in there. Can we start there? I think we need to have more than, you know, like even a table that's a little bit bigger than the ones in Maureen's office. I just remember seeing you, Maureen. Yeah, you, Maureen and Todd trying to work on the budget and half of your papers were in your lap. So I think we definitely need, you know, a table that we can at least put six people around at a minimum. And not much bigger is gonna fit in there. And I think whatever table is in there, I kind of like that table. So if we can work around that, but I I agree, I think we should maybe have one workstation set up for selectmen or, you know, anybody else. And then I know there's files that file cabinets that need to go in there too. I think we sort of build, you know, around that that table.
I mean, it may predate me, so I apologize, but I don't believe we ever discussed at a meeting having a workstation in there and what it would be used for. I'm fine having one in there, especially if down the road, we can get a larger screen on the wall or something so that we are having meetings in there, we can do presentations. I think that'd be super useful, especially when 79 starts coming around. There's gonna be lots of stuff to look at that are easier to throw up in a screen than print out. A lot of stuff in that room now and in Tracy's area that we gotta figure out what to do with. I tried to get a a field trip to the pod this morning and learned that we don't even have a key to our own pod to get into, so I didn't get to see what was inside there. But from what Tracy says, there's three, four, five good-sized filing cabinets full of fun stuff to bring out. I kind of felt like the table in there now is a little big, especially if we start, if we end up putting things in the room instead of, I know there's a pretty good idea of putting them in the hallway outside. But I feel like it's gonna get really cramped really quick where you're starting to kind of shuffle side to side to get around the room if we've got people at the table and then cabinets in there as well. So I don't know if we have something like in between the big table and that little one that Maureen has. Now she's shaking her head no.
That's a no. I had I had had Teddy measure the tables to see if there was one slightly smaller or narrower, and they're all pretty much the same thing. The only thing that's different is the the feet on some of them. But this one's in the best condition. That's how it won.
Gotcha. I can bring a chainsaw in tomorrow.
No, but it it will make it difficult if we were to put all the file cabinets in. But at the same time, you know, there's judging on how I've gone through files since being here, there's probably a lot of things that we can get rid of in those pods and in those files. There's probably some culling that still could be done. I know we got rid of 240 or so boxes last year. I'm I'm gonna guess we can get rid of another, you know, 15 or 20 boxes through culling. There's a lot of duplicate information. So I'm hoping that is the case with with some of those files. And the files that are in there now are the smaller type files that don't fit as much. If they're going into the laterals, they don't need as many drawers to go into the laterals. So I think it's depending on the size, it's like every three drawers fits in one of the large laterals. That's some significance. But it it's labor intensive to move it all and re-categorize it and get everything in some semblance of order for sure.
I have a suggestion. I had sent everybody pictures of that gigantic bulletin board that we have on that wall, which is probably, I'm not exaggerating, is probably 12 feet long, if I'm not mistaken. I would suggest that we take down that bulletin board and we get a much smaller one and put it on the other hall in the hallway near the town administrator's office. And then we get six lateral file cabinets and we stack them in that hallway, which would give you plenty of room for file space. Does anybody like that idea?
He showed me that today. Oh, go ahead, Maureen.
Oh, no, I was just said to say, I did measure it out on the the requirements for for fire passage. It does get a little crowded, though, in there with any type of of files and it's kind of claustrophobic feeling, so I wouldn't say line it all the way down. I think partially would be great.
Talking about three, I'm talking about three file cabinets, which is nine feet, and then stack three more on top of that.
Would we then have to get a little ladder somewhere in there?
Yeah, I don't know how I'd function, get that. I don't know about stacking as far as the safety.
Well, you talk about safety, you know, we're sending our executive assistant, and you hadn't didn't get into those pods out there. You know, you want to see how hot it is in the summertime to go look for files, number one. And then in the wintertime, you freeze to death. We have got to get those file cabinet, those files in our office so you don't have to continue going out and using these pods. I mean, it's been there. What's it been, a year, Tracy? Maybe longer?
Almost two years that that the files
We gotta fix this problem.
Yeah, I want them out of there too. I don't want somebody slipping on the ice or something else going back and forth.
It's bad.
If if I can speak, I think that if we could have, you know, one or two drawers brought in, that would allow me to go through, try to do one drawer a day, purge and slide them into get three of those cabinets in that hallway just side by side. And let me, you know, see what we can fit in those after I'm able to purge them. It is gonna be a very time extensive project. But I'm hoping that this would be a great opportunity for us to get our filing system purged, clean, organized. And, you know, it would be, it's gonna be a big job, but it'll be a good job to be done. And then if we can start with those three in the hall, then we would have a much greater idea of what else we need.
And then you could put a couple of file cabinets in the Tracy's office on the wall, you know, where that you know, where that other person, whatever that person is going to be, along with their desk. And then you could put another file cabinet beside the file cabinet, the lateral file cabinet that's in the conference room. So that'd give you at least five, six, seven lateral file cabinets that should do the job.
Absolutely. I think the key is though, just to get started and, and see what, see what we have.
And I think it was, might have been Tracy I was sharing this with earlier today when I was there. Thank you again for all your time today. I know I sucked up a bunch of it talking to you. You know, I'd like us to entertain the idea of moving forward, if we're not already, just any document that comes in, we digitize it, make it searchable, then file it. But hopefully then that's the last time we have to touch the physical copy unless we have to go and dispose of it later on, once records retentions are met. Just to save the walking back and forth to go to flip through all the files, it's got to, it has to add up the time during the week to just find stuff. And we've already heard a number of cases where it's like, I don't know where that file went. So if we can cut down on, you know, the, the human time going back and forth, looking for stuff, great. And then where they are starts to become less and less of an issue. So just something to throw out there if we want to entertain that policy down the road.
And to make sure everything's going on the shared drive. So everyone has access for things that are non-confidential in nature. And, you know, to be able to share the information without having to ask other people in other departments too.
Especially once all of us get computers, that'll be the next question. Instead of making you print it, just say, where is this?
We should start with the selectmen because none of us have access to any of those shared drives now. And so I want, as a member, all shared drives of all accesses to all the files in the selectmen's office. That way they don't have to bother Tracy. They don't have to bother the town administrator. I know how to search these things. I know how to look for these things.
Yep, so I would like to.
Instead of calling Tracy and say, Tracy, can you go in the pod and look in file cabinet number five? It's in the drawer number three to see what's in there?
And shovel all the snow away from the door to get into it.
Yeah, well, you need to go in.
It's been rough. Let's just say that.
All right. So can we have the town administrator put together a plan here as to what needs to be done and how we're going to get it done? Or can we get the executive assistant?
I'm not a decorator. You don't want me making those decisions. I will mess it up.
All I know is, you know, once, in the normal world, in the non-COVID-19 world, Brian, you know this, I've met more people at Dunkin' Donuts to discuss town business. And I would much rather have a place at Town Hall to do it.
Okay, so can you put that together and let us know what needs to be done? And if we have to hire some part-time people or some temporary help, we'll do that. But we got to get it done. And we just can't continue, you know, and this is non-productive for everybody in our office.
Yep. And I'm happy to come lug boxes around if you need help.
Okay.
I'm writing your name down.
All right. Moving right along to discuss the replacement of the assessor's vehicle. It's my understanding that the, the assessor's vehicle got into a car accident, I guess, a year and a half ago or so. And that it was replaced by a police cruiser, which makes sense, you know, we had a police cruiser available. But it's also my understanding that, that doesn't conform to the Greens Community Agreement that we signed with the state because it's not a vehicle that meets the standards. So Maureen sent me an email and said, we're not, I don't know how long ago. It said, we're not in compliance. And so I said, okay. So it was too bad that we didn't discuss it, you know, during the budget process and during the capital plan, you know, review. And so she's making a suggestion that we sell the border health, existing auction off the border health vehicle along with a fire car that belongs to the fire department and go get, try to get something on an auction to do that. So my question is, is that, first of all, is the fire chief okay with surplusing that vehicle?
So that should have been surplus a while ago. I will reach out to the fire chief again on surplusing that vehicle. But that new truck that was bought in this past winter, that was a replacement for that vehicle and it should have been surplus at that time.
Okay, so he has no need for that vehicle?
I don't know that he has no need for it, but he did get a replacement for it.
Okay, that's a different question.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but if we, I know he's had some issues with it. It's not, you know, the, in the best condition and all that. But what he was using it for, which he's no longer using it for, was for the people to go to fire training, which is now in Bridgewater. So that'd be, it's kind of different than it was just even a few months ago. I can reach back out to him, but my biggest concern is just the assessor's vehicle at this time.
Okay. So how do you plan on funding the assessor's vehicle?
So we do have some funds available in the, in the assessor's vehicle line. But I looked at it and it looks like it's just about $1,000 total for repair and maintenance on the assessor's vehicle. So I was looking to see if you had any suggestions because it's, it's really, you can't, when you sell the other vehicle, it goes into the general fund as opposed to being able to be awash this year. If we sold the surplus vehicles that we have, it would go into the general fund.
Okay, so that we need an appropriation at town meeting.
So we, we could get appropriation, but it's, Frank said it's, he thinks it's going to be like $1,000. So we're not talking a capital project here. We're talking, you know, $1,000 or $1,500.
Right, but we still need money.
Mr. Chair, does anyone know what happened to the insurance money? Did that from that car?
Insurance money goes into the general fund also.
It just went into the general fund and not earmarked or anything to be. Now, of course, I do have to apologize because I was on the board of assessors when the accident happened. I was then on the board of selectmen when we approved the temporary use of the vehicle, knowing it wasn't going to conform to the green communities. And then even further is on my embarrassment is that I signed the green communities thing, knowing the car was on there. And I completely forgot to bring it up under capital plans. So when we were doing the capital planning. So a lot on me and, you know, but we do need to replace the vehicle. I just don't know what kind of vehicle we get for $1,000 either.
You know Frank's a magician. But that being said, we can wait on it. This came up last month when we were, no, month before, when we were working on submitting the yearly green communities. And we, we had to assure them that it was a temporary solution. I didn't have a date set in there where we would, we would put it through. But I did let them know that we would be looking at doing that sooner rather than later as replacing the vehicle. So it just came up on Frank's radar that there was a couple of vehicles just like the ones I had described to him. So he just came to me and said, you know, would this be something you'd be interested in doing now?
May I ask a fundamentally just base level question? Does the Green Communities Act require us to replace this? Or could we pitch it and pay mileage to the folks that have to drive? And not pay insurance on it, not pay for repairs on it?
So we could do that, but that would be, like Rich said, at town meeting to vote line.
Brian, people like the border health agent, you know, and some of these people don't like to use their own cars.
Understood. But a $1,000 vehicle is going to come with its own issues.
I agree with that.
In the interim, we did pay the, the person that uses the vehicle from the assessor's office to use his own vehicle. So he was reimbursed for mileage and everything. But we had the available car from the police department just sitting there, perfectly good car. If it wasn't for the green communities thing, it wouldn't be really an issue at all. So, and again, that car doesn't, you know, just from being on the board of assessors, it used to be just like a Ford Focus or something like that. It doesn't really cost the town a whole lot of money because it is an economy car. I, I just wish we could buy them a used one that's, you know, three or four years old. But that means we, you know, if we have a town meeting, can we ask for the money there? I mean, I.
Yeah, we can.
The fall.
We have to, we have to remember that it has to comply to the Greens Community. It has to be.
Right. And the car we had before did, it was, you know, I'm not saying to buy an electric car, but it has to be, you know, 20 miles per gallon or whatever it is. And again, that was supposed to be a temporary fix, but, you know, in municipal government, temporary fixes, one forever.
Okay. So I guess that's the plan. That's what we'll do.
Okay.
All right. Next item, discuss the proposed new telephone system for the town offices. I guess I, I guess I'm a little confused because this proposal for the new telephone system, which I understand was about $40,000, was not on the capital plan for fiscal '21. So that's number one. And then number two, it was never reviewed, not while I've been on the board. It was since last November, it wasn't reviewed with the board for the board's approval for a new telephone system based on those numbers. And also, the town administrator on July, middle of July, signed a contract, you know, for this new telephone system without the approval of the board, you know, as well. But I got a copy of the contract from the accounting office. And when you look at the copy of the contract, you know, from the accounting office, it's very specific, you know, in that contract, you know, that we are supposed to provide, or the, as part of that contract, the work is fully described in the above proposed, proposal dated May 20th, 2020, which is, which is attached. And so there's no attachment, you know, to this contract about what we purchased, warranty, services, installation or whatever. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why this happened.
So I don't see what you're looking at.
I was just going to ask, sir, is this, I don't have it in my packet. Was it sent to us over email?
Nope. I got a copy from the accounting office.
Okay.
This is the original from the accounting office.
Okay, I'm just, I don't know if Leah has a copy either and we're discussing it.
I do not have a copy.
Okay. So why wasn't there any attachment to the contract, Maureen?
Tracy has the MD com contract that I gave to her for this meeting. Not sure why it didn't get on there, but that had all the attachments to it.
Not the contract that was signed by you up in the accounting office, that was given to the accounting office.
I don't see what you have in your hand, so I can't comment on it.
Yeah, I mean, if it was an agenda item, I would have thought we all had the same thing to work from. So let me see if I have anything else in my mail.
Anyway, so the point, the point here is that it was not on, was not on the capital plan, number one, would need an approval by the board of selectmen to do that. And we had many meetings talking about the capital plan, okay? And the contract was not approved to have the town administrator approve that contract.
So as far as it being on the capital plan, it was part of the capital plan in the fall. And we didn't have fall meeting. And I took it off the capital plan in the fall because I wrote a grant for it. The grant didn't come through on it. And then we had a discussion with you, myself, Todd and Nate in my office about putting it back on the capital plan. But then we had the $55,000 left over in the IT budget for the project that, I'm not sure which project it was that had 55,000 left over. And we were going to do that. But then I reached out to the CARES people. And after we started having problems due to the phone system being inadequate and having answering machines and not integrated phone systems in the town. And they did approve that voiceover IP as part of a CARES reimbursement.
You have that in writing?
No, no, I will get it for you. If it had been on the capital plan, we would have not got it approved for free for reimbursement. It would have been part of the budget and we would have not been reimbursed for the voiceover IP. We are being reimbursed for the voiceover IP.
Okay. But according to our policy and procedure, all capital items, $10,000 or more, had to be included on our capital plan. And it was not on our capital plan.
If it had been on your capital plan, it wouldn't be part of the COVID-19 reimbursement.
But that was before that. It had to be included on the capital plan in order for it to get funding. Doesn't make any difference whether it's grant money or whatever. It still needs to be on the capital plan. And the funding source is then determined whether you use town money, grant money or whatever.
So for the air conditioning units.
You're changing subjects.
I was just about to ask the same question. What did, what did the old Town Hall cost?
You told me about a threshold that you're saying exists for spending capital money or money over $10,000. But capital projects, in the way I read it, capital projects were coming from the budget.
Okay. Did this get approved by the board of selectmen?
Did?
This $40,000 for the phone system?
No.
Was never presented to the board, was it?
To your board, no.
No. So shouldn't it have that?
If, yes. In retrospect, would I have liked to have done it differently? Yes. But had it been part of the capital plan, we would not be getting it reimbursed by CARES.
What, what did our contractor's standard oil cost put HC, AC into Old Town Hall?
Which one? $17,248 and change, I think.
When did we vote on that?
We voted on it a couple of meetings ago.
Right, but you, you really can't compare the two.
First of all, we got a $10,000 donation.
Right.
To purchase that. Okay.
But isn't that essentially the same CARES is?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't that be the same line of thought that CARES money is?
No.
The $10,000 donation did not go towards that. That's completely COVID-19 reimbursed, which you cannot use any donation money for.
I understand that. But we were getting the, do we have in writing that we're getting reimbursed $17,000 CARES money?
Okay, can I, can I ask?
Excuse me. Do we have in writing that we're getting $17,000 reimbursed in CARES money?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just keep bringing these things up because we don't have anything documented.
You can say it loud enough, but that's not how the process has been working.
I understand how the process worked, but we gave you specific instructions before to make sure that if we're going to get reimbursed for something, that it needs to be put in writing. Didn't we tell you that?
No.
Didn't we?
I feel like we're measuring two projects differently in the same outcome.
We've talked about three different things now here, Brian, that I don't have in writing, that town does not have in writing.
Nor do you have a policy in writing about contracts.
You're changing subjects. I'm just saying that we asked you to make sure that we put in writing, not a telephone call, to Plymouth County Commissioners asking us for, get in writing what we're getting reimbursed for. We haven't done that.
So can I, can I contribute something, please? So as Maureen said, this was supposed to be part of the capital plan or supposed to be for fall town meeting. It never was because we didn't have town meeting. So it's a very different situation. What happened with the Old Town Hall happened out of, you know, emergency to be able to get all this. It's a completely different subject. That was never discussed. And that happened because of COVID-19. This voiceover IP was something that we talked about. We just never did it. When COVID nineteen happened, we said, boy, it would have been nice if we had what we should have done before. So yes, we needed it because of COVID nineteen, because we realized how deficient our phone system was. But you can't compare the two because this voiceover I P has been, you know, just talked about and talked about. I never remember voting on it. It doesn't mean I did or didn't. I just, I've heard about it and heard about it and heard about it, and I didn't know it was going to be a thing until a couple of meetings ago. So I, I don't see how we compare the two things because one has been talked about for such a long time and should have done through, you're right, our mistake by not doing it and, and upgrading the system led to us having an inefficient system when we had to shut our town hall. So yes, we are benefiting because we all made a mistake. That's the way you want to put it. That's fine, but you can't compare the two things. We would never have done the, the Old Town Hall if Lillian didn't need all this early voting that, you know, has now been placed upon, you know, burdening all the clerks.
But I feel, and it's a feeling, right, so we're going to disagree, that's okay, that we are essentially going down a similar path for both, both projects. History is history. And we didn't have such a magnifying glass on Old Town Hall getting done because we all wanted it done. We all agreed it was necessary to find little a place that was safe and secure to do the voting. But if that was seventeen thousand dollars, regardless of how we're getting the money, I didn't vote on a seventeen thousand dollar contract. I voted to accept a ten thousand dollar donation from Lakeham. So we might.
But Brian, we discussed it, didn't we? We made a decision to do it. We did not discuss the telephone system to do it. Right? I mean, you were, were on the board.
This, discussed it when?
Anytime. This has never been brought in front of the board for their approval. Not, not at my time, not since last November. I mean, that's a fact.
Mr. Chair, how would you like to proceed?
Well, we already signed a contract, you know, without the authority of the Selectmen to do that. Now, what I would like to see is what's the plan? Because nobody's talked about how to install the system, what takes need to be done, the training of the employees, the setting up of the employees, the installation, the wiring that would need to be done. Where's the plan? I haven't seen the plan.
The wiring is part of that CAT six wiring that you read in the I T plan?
Yeah, but it's not finished yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, but what's the plan to install the system?
I will happily give you a, a plan and have that rally for you tomorrow.
Well, did you talk to the employees about the requirements of a new telephone system?
Um, a, a lot of times, yes. Not every employee, but yes, lots of employees, and they're very excited about it.
Okay. I don't know what the requirements are because you haven't provided us any information. You know, is that unreasonable?
No, I will happily bring you all the information and, and then we can move forward with the project that is very much needed in town hall that is of no cost to our budget.
That's not the point. Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss and vote the, uh, approval authority for bids and town contracts. Um, this was discussed last November as a board, uh, and it was voted on as a board to say that all bids, we have to vote on all bids that are given to the town, and we have to vote on those bids, and then we either sign the contracts ourselves or the town administrator, we give the authority to the town administrator.
But, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I was just asking what date that was.
I don't remember the exact date. I'm sorry. It was in November. Okay, but right now, so we're absolutely clear because it's obvious that we're not getting all the information that we need, and the contracts that are being signed are not complete. And so I want, I will make a motion myself that all bids and all contracts need to be presented and approved by the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, may I add some clarifiers in there?
Go ahead.
Um, federal contracts where we're just being reimbursed are considered contracts. State contracts, whenever I submit any paperwork to the state, that's considered a contract. Anything off the state bid list, um, that I'm buying is a contract. Buying anything, um, with a purchase and sales order is considered a contract.
You know, I don't have a problem looking at everything, honestly, until we can all figure out we'll feel comfortable that it's getting done right. I, I'm just, you know.
So I, I'm a little annoyed right now because this is the second or third agenda item tonight where items are being, evidence is being referred to, and we weren't given it in the packet. So it was a.
What evidence? Evidence about what?
Uh, you just mentioned a vote taken during November, which if we're.
I, I just, I just made a motion, Brian, that to vote and to the authority for all bids and, um, contracts.
Okay.
That's my motion. Okay.
I would, I would suggest an amendment that we put a dollar value because I don't think we need Frank having to go and come to us to buy fertilizer, or Nate to come to us to sign a bid or a contract for something that needs electrical work or contractor work. I mean, if we want to put a number on it, fifty grand, I'm fine with that, but to just flat out say every bid and every contract in the town has to be run by the Board of Selectmen, I think is going to slow business down.
You do realize, you do realize that we go to bid for fertilizers? You do, you do realize that we have contracts for maintenance work, for electricians, for, for carpenters?
We do now. We just consolidated down to one supplier, I believe, for fertilizer and such. These are examples.
Just saying that all those contracts, if you recall back in July, um, excuse me, yeah, back in July, we approved, you know, contracts for carpenters, for plumbers, for whatever.
So you're needling my examples. So. Yes, you are. Yes, you are. So are we going to ask Frank when he goes to the auction to say, call the Board of Selectmen, have an emergency meeting if you want to vote in that truck?
No.
Right, that's a feeling.
He, he has funding for it. He has funding for it. So if we're going to buy the assessors' vehicle, then we would say, you can go buy a vehicle up to a certain amount of money.
Okay.
That's the way it is.
Go ahead, vote. That's too much.
Okay, all those in favor?
Maybe an aye.
The camera aye. All those opposed?
Yea, nay.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is to discuss the proposed King Systems Document Management System. Uh, once again, the board hasn't gotten any information on this proposal, haven't seen it. A few weeks ago, I sent an email to the town administrator to ask her to provide information on the system. I asked her to come into the Board of Selectmen to present this system to the board so the board would know. I asked them to provide any contracts that we have, any proposals. I haven't seen anything.
So Chair, as we spoke about at length last time we talked about it, the reason King Systems came in the town hall was to create said proposal. So we don't have that yet for King Systems for you to look at.
Okay, so we're expecting a proposal very shortly. Right? We're expecting a schedule of installation, and who's going to be responsible from the town to implement the system?
So implement what system? You mean facilitating someone to take the files offsite to do that? So if we have a clerk in the town, uh, administrator's office, uh, they could probably do that, but I think Lillian would probably like to handle her own documents and hand them over um, by herself, just, just a feeling on that.
So what, what documents are going to be done?
So it's going to be all the records, retentions, documents for Lillian, and she has a list. Um, and all of the completed documents for the building, uh, Board of Health. Yeah, and the building and Board of Health records. So those are the three categories that will be done.
That was the, the grant funding? Is that correct?
And that's for the grant that I wrote for ourselves and Free Town, um, for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in change to have seventy-five thousand dollars for us for our records management and retention and to get a plotter scanner that had been on the twenty nineteen uh, capital plan that we hadn't bought yet. Um, but those funds are now, uh, going to be able to be reallocated because the eight thousand dollars was included in the grant.
Okay, uh, I don't know if the board is aware, but it's going to be some PDF files, but it's also going to be microfiche or microfilm?
Microfilm as, as the state guidelines state.
Uh, nobody uses that technology. That technology goes back to the seventies. Why would we even consider even doing that?
It's a state requirement.
I'm just saying, why should, why would we do that? You got to buy readers and stuff like that, so that's why I'm asking to see what this proposal is all about, so the board can understand what's involved in getting this project done. I don't care if it's great money or not. I mean, the logistics of getting this done is huge, huge. Right?
Lots of towns adjacent to us have completed the project.
Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you that, and I can't, I can't support anything that's using nineteen seventies technology. I'm sorry.
That's the state and not.
Well, we don't have to do the state thing. We don't have to do it.
But this is the whole purpose, to be ready for whatever the state requires and not have to continue to have paper records in the town hall.
I know, but if we use PDF files to do that instead of microfiche, that's, I mean, that's ridiculous.
No, we're not doing instead, we're doing both.
Right. Why? Why are we doing both?
Because that's the requirement from the state, and I understand that's a circular, um, statement, but that's just the way it is.
Okay, so when can we get that system present, uh, presented to the board?
They just sent us boxes to do a sample box, um, and, uh, I know Lillian's going to do a sample box after she's done with elections.
Okay.
What's the, um, how would they do this? So if we've got a certain amount of funding through the grant, would they basically say, we'll do up to the amount? Or is it to?
Yep, that's, um, so they know how much, um, we got for the grant, um, and, um, they will tell us if they can do ninety percent, a hundred percent, if there'll be money left over or, or any of that. So they'll be able to judge. So the process goes, they take the single box, and the single box should be made up of things that are uh, pretty close to what they'll be working on, and then they judge how long it takes them to go through a box and how long it takes them to scan and do it. And then you come up with approximately how many boxes that you would be able to fill with your projects, and then they come up with a number.
So our efforts to purge are in our favor, if we can do that at a time.
And that's why, um, that's why they worked so hard to get it done last fall was because um, they had had, um, King Systems come in, uh, a year before, and the price was pretty significant. But that was with all of those boxes included and the, the entire attic, which was riddled, I mean, it was floor to ceiling all through the attic, um, with, um, with all sorts of older files that were, turned out to mostly be duplicates. Um, and those are now in the historic library in the downstairs.
Nice, okay. That's good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss COVID nineteen quarantine rules regarding employees going out of state.
So this is for us to talk about the policy that we've written up, correct?
So this is a policy based on, um, the ever-changing governor's orders, um, uh, from March, wait, wait, wait a minute. Um, starting in March, but now, no, that was last month, um, starting the first of August, um, about quarantining, um, people that go out of state and especially into hot zone areas. So, um, if you look, every day it changes where the hot zones are. So we, we, uh, took the language out that was specific and made it, uh, more general so we could accommodate.
Have we heard back from the three unions on this?
We heard back from two of the unions. One had questions, and we haven't heard back from one of the unions.
Um, then I, do we have the questions from the one union?
Um, one union, one, one union wanted to know, um, if they, we could amend it to use the sick time as part of their quarantine time. Um, but I would, I would say, and so did, um, town council, that defeats the purpose, especially if someone has a significant amount of built-up sick time, um, and they could use it for it. We, we just don't want people traveling to areas that are significantly contagious at this time and bringing it back to the people of, of town hall and the people of Lakeville.
I say we table this until we get all the answers.
Do you want to discuss anything that you would like to remove from the document in, in, in that time or no?
No, but if you have, um, whatever you have from whichever union, can you forward that? Because I don't think we have that, right?
I don't have the questions. We had such a fluid situation. I mean, the list of states in here is already out of date.
Yeah, um, and that's why we changed the language a little bit and made it neutral. All right, we can.
If you can, you can just forward us whatever one union asks questions and.
And do we put to the other one? Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to table this for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is to, um, where are we at?
Uh, twenty-two, I think?
Yeah, review and update Selectmen rules of order policy from March two thousand and fourteen.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, I think I require, uh, requested this one. It was with respect to numbers in the existing policy back to twenty fourteen, um, that numbers six and eight refer specifically to given the agenda items at town administrator. I didn't know if that needed any updating uh, for our purposes to be the executive administrator or not. Um, I think everything else kind of aligned with what we've been doing. Let me double check here. Oh, and then like number eight says, sets a time of forty-eight hours before the meeting, which for us would be a Saturday typically.
Well, as you know, Brian, I've, and we discussed this, you know, at the meeting, you know, that I was trying to move everything up by a day.
Yep.
So we give the opportunity for, uh, both the town administrator and executive assistant. So the way, this, the way it worked this week, as you know, I sent out an email to everybody saying, hey, we'd like to have any items on the agenda, you know, to be, uh, provided by three o'clock on Tuesday, and then I said, anything that, to provide any documentation that was required for any of the items to be put on the agenda to have it available for, uh, Wednesday, Thursday morning, actually, I think I said. And then Tracy could put the backers together. So is there something wrong with that process or?
No, I thought the process was fine. I didn't know since we tend, we tend to refer to policy quite a bit if we wanted to update this to reflect to our current, uh, working process. If there's a need, that's fine, but.
We can, we can change it, but you know, the, um, this would give you the flexibility to go that extra day if we had to do that, but now we're trying to do it. I don't care one way or the other.
Listen to me, I was scanning all the old policy book and came across this and just wanted to see if there was any, if there's any interest or any value, really.
Okay, um, anybody want to make any changes or we all said?
Well, all I'd like to say is, for the record, my spine can't handle thirty-six items on an agenda. So if I have something rich that I really need to have on the agenda, you can, I'll just send it to Maureen and Tracy and they can get it to you. I can include you, but Tracy, you don't have to, you can skip me off of that list every couple of weeks. I have, and I'll bring it to the board's attention.
All right, we discussed number twenty-three, the, the I T staffing. Number twenty-four, number twenty-four is review, update Selectmen policy from nineteen seven, from two thousand and seventeen, and appointments to town boards, towns committees.
Uh, yes, sir, I believe this is also my request, which was, I wanted to ask if the board felt it was worthwhile to um, add in here, who actually is going to reach out to candidates? So. So my thought it would be the existing chairman of whatever committee, et cetera, the person is being appointed to. Um, just so that there's no questions on uh who should be reaching out once somebody is appointed.
I'm sorry, Brian, take that again, please. Where, where, where are you?
Uh, let's see here, let me find it. It was number basically kind of in the area of number eight and nine for procedure to, for new appointments. So it, you know, it goes to say.
Procedure, I'm sorry, procedure or, I'm sorry, you're talking about decision recounting the vacancy?
Procedure for new appointment. So it looks like it is page two. Now, this is the one that is dated January 9th, 2017. Uh, so it's actually right above reappointments, uh like number eight, nine, that would kind of be the area.
Okay.
So applicants not chosen for vacant position, sent a letter to thank, but um the applicant that is brought on, and perhaps I missed it, I thought there would be perhaps nice to add some language on who would be responsible for reaching out to them. And my thought would be, we would make that the, the chairman of whatever committee or board they're uh appointed to, to reach out. Then probably to Tracy to get uh their card and whatnot.
Well, the only, the only problem with that is, is that a lot of times, you know, these boards are part-time boards and they only meet, you know, certain times, and whereas we make the appointment, I know that Tracy, you know, turns around and uh sends them or notifies them that you've been appointed. And now you need to be sworn in. Since she's there every day.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yep, um, I think that, that, you know, the executive assistant should probably make the notification, but again, you know, sometimes if we all know how important it is, it never hurts to have a backup, even if it's not in writing.
Yeah, and and really just putting it in writing, I think is, you know, sometimes helpful, just so there's no question on what to expect to do next.
You know, Brian, the only problem is sometimes some of the appointments are a little contentious, and I'm not going to say that, you know, there's wrongdoing, but you know, I would rather the selectmen make the appointment, so I would rather the notification come from the selectman's office.
And I'm totally open to that. Then perhaps I'd make a suggestion to modify um number nine in that section. Uh, looks like.
About um before applicants not chosen, before that, we write in um the executive assistant.
Yeah, like applicant, applicant appointed, help me out here, I'm not good with uh English.
They'll notify, they'll notify the appoint, the new appointee or whatever. So Tracy, we're giving this responsibility to you.
What do you want for language, Tracy?
I already have it, so yeah. Basically, what happens is when they get appointed by the board, the board comes in, signs the appointment forms. When I get the appointment form signed, I notify the town clerk, and then I send out a letter to the applicant with directions on how to go get and get appointed. Um, the COVID-19 has made it a little different where we're having, you know, to basically email people and say the town clerk has your form, please make an appointment to come in and get sworn in. But um, you know, that's our typical process, so um, we could just say that the, the we could just say appointees will be notified by, through the selectman's office or something like that, I mean.
And then to Tracy's pain and chagrin, um, probably half of those people used to get their appointment letter and then say that they did not get their appointment letter, and then Tracy would have to do a second appointment letter. Um, I think you still have a massive pile of the appointments from July um hanging around.
I've already emailed everybody that hasn't come in, so I notified them, and I've begun scanning everybody's appointment forms. So now when people lose their appointment forms, I'll be able to just print up a scanned copy instead of having the selectman have to re-sign one.
Yep.
And then for the number nine, applicants not choosing, do we literally send a letter in the mail or do we send them an email or?
I often send the mail, a letter in the mail, and in especially in this instance, um, we can send some letters in the mails and and recommend that um, you know, we do have, you know, vacancies.
Other vacancies, yeah.
And, you know, suggest, you know, that they take a look at that, and if they have any questions, please reach out to me and I can let them, you know, what the board's doing, things like that, and um, you know, encourage them to, you know, apply to something different that might appeal to them.
Oh, you want to make a change there, Brian, or?
I, I think it would be beneficial just to kind of lay it out and just say that the selectman's office will be in charge of reaching out to the appointees.
So can you uh make, make that modification, then we'll put it on the agenda for approval next week? Thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda is um, I think we already talked about the Rhode Island pro, the Rhode Island Road project that we would provide a clerical person for that.
Yep.
We all set on that? Okay.
So.
The next question is discuss the possibility of a harbor master in the future.
Okay, who put this on the agenda?
Am I gonna get a tomato thrown at me?
I've been talking about a harbor master for two and a half months now, and then I'm like, what is going on?
So I, this was my request, and and this, I'm not looking for a large discussion. This is really just to bring up um, you know, discussion amongst us and then see if there's any immediate feedback from the public. I mean, we've certainly seen this year has been challenging on Long Pond, um where, you know, thankfully LPD does have a presence out there. They've been getting a lot of kudos for having a presence and people realizing that, hey, you know, Lakeville's out here enforcing, but they can't do everything all the time. Uh, we've seen when they are not there, large crowds going uh to the Great Pond and, you know, going in droves, coming in from different locations, since uh, you know, being a Great Pond, anybody does have access to it. So really, you know, is this something that we want to consider in the future to adopt some of the, the harbor master rules where we do have somebody out there, you know, on a more frequent basis that is also enforcing the speed limit, which I think is 45 miles an hour, headway speed if they're near swimming areas or swimmers. Uh, we saw a number of posts over the last couple of months where people were concerned that there was kind of turning into the Wild West near kids that were swimming off, you know, their houses on the shoreline. Uh, so I'm sure it's probably a lightning bolt topic. I'm sure there's people that would love it, others that wouldn't like it, because it starts to look like more regulation. Um, but I think it's, you know, something I wanted to just throw out there and get the feeling of the public. Um, see if you think this is something that's worthwhile. It's certainly challenging since the, you know, Long Pond specifically borders Freetown as well. And then it's environmental police that actually run the state boat ramp. So you've got this really awkward uh multi-layered jurisdiction going on there. But uh it's been a very interesting summer. Um, and you know, if anything, I just want to acknowledge that we do see people's concerns that are out there and asking, you know, for us to do more. Um, LPD is, you know, doing what they can. They're doing a great job when they are out there, so thank you very much to them. And I know they've also trained Freetown on our boat, so if there was a a reason where we couldn't get to our boat to respond to an emergency quick enough, Freetown would be able to do that. So I just kind of want to throw that out there, see if my colleagues had any general um ideas. I think this may have come up in the past um from some of Tracy's notes. Um, so really, I just want to put that out there, see if there's any quick thoughts, and then see what some of the people say after the meeting.
I have a thought, if I would be allowed to speak? Is that okay? Um, I would think that any position that we would do as harbor ma, harbor master would be a prime candidate to have a shared position uh with Freetown, because if anyone was a harbor master, they'd want that joint jurisdiction over the entire pond um and not just the Lakeville portion of said pond. Just throwing that out there is, if, if anyone was thinking about it, that would be a, a great candidate for a shared position.
I think that's a very valid point.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Um, a, a previous board, um, gosh, I want to say five years, seven years ago, um, we were having problems with um moorings, um with people mooring their boats in front of um people that lived on the shore, um in front of their properties, causing problems getting in and out with their own boats. Um, so we had gotten a complaint and um the police had been out and and talked to the people, and it just wasn't getting resolved. So the board did have me research harbor masters. Um, I got tons of information from other towns and um, you know, harbor masters do more than just control the speed, they inspect moorings, um, you know, they, they do all that kind of stuff. Um, but at that time, you know, um, the cost, um, they didn't feel that the cost would um be able to be recouped from the mooring fees, so it just kind of ended there.
All right, so I will agree with Brian that uh, first of all, the LPD is doing a really good job. I know a couple of weekend days this, this past summer, the boat patrol has gotten, you know, I think at one point more calls than the land patrol, so. Um, and I think people are used to have their number handy now, which is a good thing. This is a huge undertaking. I know I talked to um Lieutenant Maltese, who's done extensive research, and the police chief, Chief Perkins, and um, all these things have to be considered. First of all, it does have to go, you know, to town meeting. There is a complication because, you know, the water, uh, the body of water um is shared with Freetown. Um, we always have to be, you know, mindful that this body of water connects to the reservoir. So there's a lot of things going on here. Um, but I do know after speaking with Lieutenant Maltese a little bit this past week that he has reached out to lots of his contacts, and this isn't unique to Lakeville right now. Um, so I'm not even sure if I'm for or against a harbor master at this point, but I'd really like to see, you know, if this uptake, uptick inactivity continues, you know, next year. If it does, I definitely think we have to go down the harbor master road. I'm hoping this is an anomaly. Um, Lieutenant Maltese also told me that one, you know, one question I had was um, are, you know, people at the boat ramp getting um just, uh, is there, how, what the parking situation is like, and he does report that the Freetown police have been ticketing people, so, you know, it's like, I think Freetown's doing all they can on their end. Um, but people are still, you know, there's so many vessels out there, and I just don't know. You know, I did some research on boats and there's, you know, been an uptick in sales. I don't know if it's a COVID reaction, but I think if it happens again next year, we're gonna have to go down. But um, yeah, but it's definitely, I, you know, we have to take a uh, and you know, at the beginning of the summer, I talked to a couple of residents and they were like, no, you know, a harbor master is a lot more rules and you know, and some of these folks that I've talked to have been there for, you know, 50, 60 years. And now, you know, here at the end of the summer, after the crazy summer out there, um, some of the same people are saying, you know, harbor master might not be such a bad idea. So, you know, plus, you know, there's a lot of rumors that um people um who have property right on the water have boat slips that they're renting, you know, to friends. And again, we have no jurisdiction over that, but even if 100 people are doing that for a few extra bucks, that puts 100 extra vessels on the same size body of water, so we have no enforcement of that unless we had something like a harbor master, so. Um, definitely, Brian, um, I can't wait to see what Facebook says tomorrow.
Probably right now, we should go look.
Yeah, it's probably blowing up. So let us know, honestly, I, I would love to know what people feel about it.
And if there's other alternatives we haven't even thought of that might be useful, I'd love to hear them too.
Yeah, well, I was going with the easy one, like if people are parking o, outside of the boat ramp and Freetown wasn't ticketing, that could be a, you know, way to sort of get some control, but, you know, they, I guess they are doing everything they can. So that's not even an option right now.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss timeline for reopening of the senior center.
That was mine. Um, and I've been in contact with Maureen and Kelly, and I didn't realize Kelly was on vacation last week, so I felt bad, so um, in our next meeting, they're both gonna give us an update.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is to review and vote to sign a municipal notice of application for Twisted Growers LLC for property located at 415 Millennium Circle. Um, this is uh required and must be signed by the municipality within 60 days of receiving it. So I will entertain a motion to uh have the town administrator um sign this um application.
So moved.
Second it, sorry.
That's okay. Any discussion? Hold on, a favor.
Maybe an aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, the camera, aye. Okay, next thing on the agenda was the request from Michael Shaughnessy uh for the selectmen to approve the transfer of lot D from Riverside Lakeville LLC, Riverside Crossing LLC for the residents at Nemasket River. Um, we got a notice, an email that uh said that they didn't provide all the information. Um, the other, the other question that I would have was um, to be honest with you, I have no idea what we're approving. Um, and I think that town council um should review uh this proposed agreement, so the board, because I would understand what needs to be done, and my concern is to make sure that the um uh mass housing and, what is it, DPH, I think it's called. Thank you. We gotta make sure that they're in agreement with this, because this hasn't come to the town, so we're gonna approve something that we really don't know anything about.
So.
At least I am anyways.
If I may speak, uh, Mr. Chair, so I had reached out to uh Bill Ryle. He is the per, the connecting person from um uh DCHD. Um, and um, he was waiting for more documents to come in through um Attorney Shaughnessy and uh for the project um before he gave his approval. So um, we didn't want it going before the board before we got an approval for, for them to protect our interests for 40R. So um, we'll get some clarification on that, but 100% behind town council reviewing any of the additional amendments or changes that they would be making to the 40R agreement that they have with the town.
It's not only the 40R agreements, the affordable units, you know, as well, so we don't know, you know.
So it says the affordable units has, haven't changed at all i, in the, in the center of the documents and everything that it says. It has it listed um individually for the affordable units, and changing a, a um a for-sale unit to a rental unit does not make any changes. We just want to make sure everything's done correctly, because it's not just one amendment that has to be changed, it's two that would have to be changed in order for that to happen, and we just don't have that yet, so it can't, uh, it can vote before the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Item number 30, discuss and vote to exercise one-year option for contracts for propane, gas, and heating oil. Um, these, this con, these contracts can be extended for one year, and uh basically um, these are companies that the town has used uh for a long time, and that um the costs of the actual cost of the oil uh and the propane is based on uh market price. And the only thing that changes is the delivery fee, uh which is per gallon, which is, you see in the contract. So um, I will entertain a motion to extend these contract, to extend the contract for standard oil uh for one year and have the town administrator approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Maybe an aye.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. The second one is uh the propane, the same uh situation that uh J San Gas Service, Inc., I would recommend, I would entertain a motion to extend this contract for one more year and have the town administrator sign the contract. So moved?
So, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Maybe an aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, sorry. Okay, next on the agenda uh is to uh to discuss and vote the appointment of Richard Coletti as a constable uh for the, for Lakeville. The police chief reports no interest, um, no issue, no interest. The police chief reports no interest, no issue, no interest, no issues with Mr. Coletti, and he would recommend reappointing him for his term to expire in August 12, 2001. So I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Richard Coletti to be reappointed, term to expire August 12, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
You and I.
Day I.
The camera, I. Oh, here it is, I'm sorry.
Chair, there was a couple comments on, I see scrolling on the chat, I didn't see them at first, but I didn't know if there was anything.
I see, let's see, the district people. Okay. Okay, that's just a general comment, yeah, okay.
Resident about the, yeah.
Okay.
Rich, can we go back to that just for one second? I don't know, Brian, if you want to compile some comments or you want me to, and we can just review them at a future date.
Yeah, sure.
Because I know you, yeah, you monitor Facebook too, so.
Yeah, I'll copy anything off of there. If anybody's got any specific comments, feel free to use the Contact the Board of Selectmen on the Lakeville map.org website and go to Departments, Board of Selectmen, contact us at the bottom. And we do get those emails, so I'll compile anything that comes in from there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, sometimes people just say things like, oh, my God, it's crazy out there, you know, just if someone, I think we need to, that was quite specific. So, you know, I'd be really curious to see those.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the DPW director asked S E R G, S E R SG to join on their bid for cave sealing and thermoplastic traffic lane painting, painting. Contract would run from February 1, 2020 to January 31, 2024. I've attached the bid results for our review. The bids need to be awarded. Our cave sealing is a winning bidder, industrial ink for $7.29 per square yard. Cave sealing with crack sealing, $770 for a square yard, and thermoplastic traffic line, traffic painting, line marking ink of .0410 per linear foot. So I guess...
I'll make a motion that we approve the S E R SG bid for cave sealing and traffic line painting from, through January 31, 2021, and authorize it to town administrator to sign the contract.
Okay, well, that's fine, but it does say the signatures of the board, but that's fine, okay. That's okay. So any discussion? Second, second that, Brian?
Second with discussion? Just notice it says the contract would run February 1, 2020. Is that accurate?
These are, these are the surge bids. They bid a group of services together for DPW. We originally didn't opt into this bid for this, so we're an add-on. But this is only, it is not for the cave, well, okay, we can do the cave sealing. I haven't received the contract yet for that, but I'm sure she'll be sending that along soon. But this is an add-on.
So we're jumping into like an already existing agreement?
Exactly. Because we're a surge member, we have the ability to jump into any of the existing surge contracts.
Gotcha.
Okay, all those, okay.
I just stand, thank you, that's all.
Okay, all those in favor?
Maybe and I.
Day I.
The camera, I. I'll entertain a motion to review and approve the Board of Selectmen's meetings for June 1, 2020, June 3, 2020, June 8, 2020, June 12, 2020, June 15, 2020, June 17, 2020, June 22, 2020, and July 6, 2020.
I'll make that motion, but I think Brian wasn't there on June.
I can do June 17 and everything after, but I do have a couple of minor corrections on the 17th and 22nd of June.
Okay.
Okay.
Rich, I'll make a motion that we approve June 1, June 3, June 8, June 12, and June 15, all of 2020.
Okay, I'll step down, second that motion. Any discussion? Very good job, Tracy. I know it was a tough time. All those in favor?
Maybe and I.
The camera, I. Okay, so...
I abstain.
Okay, right, all right. So...
Now I'll make a motion that we approve June 17, June 22, and July 6. Second, Brian.
I've got a small amendment I wouldn't mind.
Okay.
June 17, I'm actually missing from Selectmen present. And then on June 22, in the notes, it says that there was a proposed Cisco development, but got voted down at town meeting. Would it be okay just to add the note that it was due to a zoning change requirement that was voted down?
I'm okay with those changes.
Okay, so Brian's making an amendment. Which one is it, June 17, Brian?
Yes, sir, June 17, that was missing. That's the only one for there.
Okay.
And June 22, just a note perhaps next to the Cisco development comment saying it was a zoning change voted down.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I.
Day I.
Okay. Anybody got any new business?
Actually, Tracy has a comment.
Oh, no.
Who would know, at your September 14 meeting, we will be all caught up in our minutes.
Awesome, thank you. I know it's been a tough summer.
Are your fingertips burning? Is there smoke coming off of them?
Yeah.
I have something under new business.
Sure.
So I happened to find a copy of a legal bill on the copy machine, and I was looking at it, and it says, conference call with Human Resource Director and Member Board of Selectmen, reroll of Wage and Personnel Board. Someone's holding out on me.
Oh, no, that was me. I was meeting with Clarinda on a topic and KP Law happened to call her back on something she had asked them about.
Okay, I didn't know if they had anything good to share with us.
That was back when, three meetings ago, four meetings ago, I brought up the wage and personnel and whether or not we've had enough changes in the town where it made sense to go back and revisit it or not.
Okay, all right, okay, okay. I don't, I mean, I'd like to see the legal bills more often, but I, when I see them, I, you know, I, they tell a story.
Yeah, I just happened to be sitting in her office at the time they called back.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, any other new business? No.
God, no.
God, no. Hey, listen, I didn't put 35 items on the agenda.
Adding anything ever I get.
I'm trying to be nice and allow anybody to put anything they want on.
I know, and I'm not doing that. I'm not adding anything.
Okay.
I'm going to put asterisk next to one that you can just kick around the road.
Okay. Updating for Lakeville Hospital property. As you know, that, I think Maureen mentioned it up front in her town administrative report, that the 43D guidelines, I believe, I'm not trying to put words in Tracy or Maureen's street, but they are completed. Correct?
I'm still working on the formatting. We're having a real trouble with the charts. So Janice and Billie and I are working on it to get them reformatted. Then I got to just go through and fix some bottom margins on the Board of Health stuff that was inserted. So they will be done by the end of the week.
Okay. I was hoping it would be done earlier.
Yeah.
No offense, we got to get these things out.
So I will, I won't work on the stuff from the meeting tomorrow. I'll work on those, I'll focus on those.
Thank you.
Is a zoning board member on there? Do we also have a change of that? No? Okay.
No, we took that off. It was on there for some reason historically, but we removed it because it doesn't belong on there.
Okay.
Okay, well, anyways, so when Tracy gets that all done, we need to distribute the copies, first of all, to the members, you know, of the committee, and also provide it to the Board of Selectmen. But we want to make sure that we have one master final copy, so we don't have multiple revised copies out there. And then what we need to do is provide it, you know, to the planning board. So are you just going to make copies and then electronically send them to them, or going to print them out so we can?
What I'll do is I will reach out to them by email and ask them if they want them electronically or if they want paper copies, and then I'll just make arrangements to get them to them.
I would think you want to print out copies, because this thing is, what's it, 50, 60 pages anyway, so.
83.
Oh, there you go. I wouldn't want to print it on my printer, thank you. So, okay, so we can do that. So this is an update as to where we are as far as the Lakeville Hospital is concerned, that the, they want to come in on September 15 to give a presentation to the 43D committee. Now, this is a high-level, you know, presentation, given the opportunity to ask any questions, the committee to ask any questions, you know, to do that. So that's a tentative date. So I guess what we should do, Maureen has informed the committee members to ask if they're available, and of course, the meeting would have to be at night, and I would imagine, you know, like 7 o'clock, I guess, is probably a good, a good time. Okay?
So, did you say a day? You were skipping out on me. Did you say?
September 15.
Okay.
That's Tuesday, September 15.
Mr. Chair, is this going to be a Zoom meeting?
We haven't decided that yet. Okay, we got to figure that out. It'll definitely will be a Zoom meeting, but some of the, some of the members, you know, the committee members, may be done live because of all the plans and so forth and so on. So we have to decide that, okay? Now, we got to make sure that the number of people going to this meeting is going to be limited, because we can't exceed 25, especially, but well, in the police station, there's no way we could put 25 people in there and have them six feet apart anyways, so. But we'll have to follow up on that to decide what we want to do. At the same time, I think it would be a good idea that we notify the neighbors, their butters anyways, that this meeting will be held. This meeting is not a public hearing meeting with the planning board. The public hearing for the planning board, they expect to submit their final plans to the planning board the week of October 19. And then the meeting would be scheduled, you know, with the planning board. So that'll be the formal date, which would be the formal public hearing and so forth and so on. Now, if people want to send us questions, they certainly can do that. They can do it separately through email, or they can do it through chat for this meeting on September 15. Now, the formal meeting with the planning board, we're going to have to allow people to access that meeting. So we'll get there when we're ready to do that. So does anybody have any questions on that?
Mr. Chair, will the planning board have a review consultant on board by that time?
Yep, well, I was going to bring the other, that was what I was going to bring up. So I sent an email to the chairman of the planning board over the weekend, and I told him that we needed to have an engineering firm, you know, to do the peer review and so forth, and I know that they're working on it. And then he assured me that by October 1st, they would have a decision on who they want to use. Okay?
So Chair, do we think they're going to have the results of the environmental impact in that plan by that date? Or is that going to be pretty much what we saw the last time they came into that?
No, the environmental impact is 99% done. They have one more test that they have to do this week, okay? Once that test is done, all the environmental issues associated with the project will be available for that meeting.
Great. That'll be very interesting to see after all this time.
Don't be kidding. All right, is anybody in questions on Lakeville Hospital? Okay, the next item on the, it has an update on the Lakeville Country Club. As the board knows, the town administrator knows that we have been working, looking at all the deeds and all the documentation associated with the land that has been put into that purchase and sale agreement for the Lakeville Country Club of $7.2 million. And after research by town council and the Board of Assessors, it's come to our attention that I think at least three of those possibles of property are not in 61A and 61PB. So town council has drafted a letter, you know, to the owner of the property and telling them that the purchase and sale agreement that is presented to the town is invalid, and they need to provide another purchase and sale agreement. So I believe that went out Friday, Maureen?
Friday afternoon, so, yeah, so I would assume that the owner should be getting it tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay, that's it. Anybody have any other questions on that? I assume the board was given copies of that letter?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Any other stuff?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
It's all Brian's fault.
Blame the new guy.
That's okay, Brian. It's all right, don't worry about it. We got to discuss these things, you know. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No.
Stop it.
All those in favor?
Maybe and I.
Day I.
The camera, I. Okay, good night, thank you.